Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening on April 3rd. I now call this meeting to order. I invite all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Thank you.
We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate, and for those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at an appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And while called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one: City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number two: City Council 2023 Regular Meeting Calendar Update Adoption. Item number three: Fourth and Fifth Avenue Railroad Grade Crossing Projects Construction Contract. Item number four: Wastewater Treatment Plant On-Call Rehabilitation and Replacement Services Contract. Item number five: U.S. 101 Express Lanes License Agreement. Item number six: Underground Flow Equalization System Temporary Construction Access Amendment. Item number seven: Police Dispatcher Lateral Hiring Recruitment Incentive Program Authorization. Item number eight: Winter Storms Designation of Authority for Expense Reimbursement and Public Assistance Cost Recovery. Item number nine: 365 Second Avenue Lease Amendment. Item number ten: Police Department Job specification updates. Item number eleven: Cannon Design Group for On-Call Design Review Services Agreement. Item number twelve: California Automated Permit Processing Cal App Program Grant Acceptance. Item number thirteen: Purchase First-Time Homebuyer Unit Supplemental Budget Appropriation. And finally, item number fourteen: Fiscal Year 2022/23 Community Development Block Grant Appropriation.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Are there any members of the council who'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
In person, you would bring me a yellow slip if you want to comment on consent calendar, or on the Zoom call, if you would please raise your hand if you're interested in commenting on consent calendar. Madam Mayor, I have no speakers.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda.
If anyone is interested in commenting on an item not on the agenda, now would be the time to send up your yellow slip to me in person, or raise your hand on the Zoom call. I'll give a moment for that to occur. For public comment for items not on the agenda. You fill out a yellow slip and bring it up to me if you want to comment on items not on the agenda. Ma'am, why don't you come up and make your comments first and bring me the slip afterwards? To the microphone.
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Right. Hello, City Council. I am Laura. I am part of the MCCDC, which is an organization inside CSM, and we aim to focus on bringing, like, topics of social justice for the students and also the San Mateo community. So, one of the things that we have been doing for that is organizing the Rising Revolution Conference that is just about talking about social justice, and this year, it's going to happen really soon, we're going to talk about housing justice, we're going to talk about LGBTQ liberation, body liberation, and mutual aid as well. So, we were hoping that with your assistance, we could talk, we could bring that conference to the San Mateo community more and try to advertise it as well. It's going to happen on April 20th to April 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 at CSM. So, I think that is all for now. I have some, if anyone is interested, I have some save-the-dates here, so then we can talk about it more and see more about the programming and things like that. We're going to have a lot of speakers and a lot of workshops related to that, so it's very interactive. If you have a child or something like that, we're going to have a childcare as well, so you're free to go to the conference and see the options. So, yeah, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is in good hands with our city clerk, who I'm sure will share this information with council. With that, we will close public comment and move on to old business. Looks like we have item number 15, leaf blower regulations, with a presentation by our sustainability analyst, Andrea Chow.
All right, good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the Sustainability Analyst with the City Manager's Office, and I'm here tonight to discuss leaf blower regulations. So, leaf blowers contribute to noise, air quality, and health impacts, and also result in impacts to the environment. For all of these reasons and more, evaluating leaf blower regulations was identified at a City Council Priority Setting Session and is a priority for this fiscal year, and it is the reason why I'm here today. The City of San Mateo currently has time-of-day restrictions for leaf blowers in residential zoning districts and in areas bordering residentially zoned neighborhoods. The municipal code limits the use of leaf blowers to between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, and between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. The use of leaf blowers is prohibited on Sundays and holidays. In addition, the ordinance requires that leaf blowers run at low nozzles, at low speeds, and use nozzle extensions to minimize noise. These restrictions have been in place since 1997. The city underwent a thorough policy analysis roughly 10 years ago, but ultimately, the City Council at that time expressed concerns over the impacts potential regulations would have on commercial landscaping businesses that are often sole proprietors and minority-owned. Since 2013, gas leaf blowers remain a common concern raised by the community. And in November 2020, leaf blower regulations were discussed at the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. Most commissioners were concerned about the City Council taking up leaf blowers at a time when there were so many other pressing COVID-19 issues and community concerns. So, the commission directed staff to focus on encouraging electric leaf blower use. In July 2021, staff launched the Electric Leaf Blower Rebate Program that provides rebates for electric leaf blowers and the associated batteries and chargers. This rebate program provides 75% of the purchase price for commercial landscapers and 50% of the purchase price, maximum $100 per residence. And you can see on the slide the uptake of the program we've had to date. City Park staff have been piloting electric equipment since 2018, recognizing the state's goal to prohibit the sale of torque-engine equipment and also the city's climate goals. They've been preparing for this transition to electric equipment and also making a conscious effort just to reduce reliance on leaf blowers overall. In 2020, parks purchased $8,000 in electric equipment, including backpack and handheld blowers, hedge trimmers, chainsaws, and weed trimmers. Using this electric equipment at the Japanese garden and also specifically on spare-the-air days has helped parks identify what the challenges and limitations are with electric equipment. Battery life seems to be like the main limitation with electric equipment. Two batteries provides about 45 minutes of use and requires two hours of recharge after those batteries are drained. So, while this works well in small sites, it has been more challenging to use the electric equipment in larger sites. And then, in addition to that, electric leaf blowers are less powerful than their gas counterpart, so it takes staff time longer, it takes staff longer to accomplish the same amount of work compared to using gas leaf blowers. Park staff provided some cost estimates for transitioning to electric blower equipment. Parks currently has an inventory of 12 gas leaf blowers, and in estimating what an electric backpack leaf blower replacement would cost, it's about $300 just for the backpack itself, and then you have to account for about four batteries per backpack blower, so that's $300 per battery, amounting to $1,500 per gas leaf blower equipment with electric. And then, for comparison, a typical gas blower costs $375 plus the cost of fuel. And then, parks also provide, parks also wanted to note that the main shop area requires some major electrical upgrades for charging batteries to use this electric equipment on a more consistent basis. So, the cost estimate does not include that, and it also doesn't include any of the impacts related to potentially increasing staff labor hours. I mentioned before that Parks is making a conscious effort to reduce reliance on blowers. There is also a budget request coming from Parks for a multi-purpose sweeper that will be used to remove debris from pathways and parking lots. The sweeper would help reduce the use of blowers and then also eliminate the dust that's associated with blower use. So, the California Air Resources Board recognizes that smog-forming emissions from SOAR, or Small Off-Road Engines, now exceed those from passenger cars. That is why the state has taken action. In October 2021, California became the first state with a statewide ban on new gas leaf blowers and new lawn mowers when Governor Newsom signed AB 1346 prohibiting the sale of new small off-road engines beginning in 2024. So, while this is a prohibition of the sale of new equipment beginning in 2024, it will still allow for the use of existing or older equipment. As a result, local restrictions still make sense to evaluate. There are three main policy areas that I'm going to go over today. One is making enhancements to our existing time-of-day restrictions. Two is putting into place a gas leaf blower ban that would still allow the use of electric leaf blowers. And then, third, completely banning the use of both gas and electric leaf blower equipment. Using time-of-day restrictions is the most common way that leaf blowers are regulated in our state. It helps limit noise impacts, but it does not address the greenhouse gas emissions, air quality, or health impacts of leaf blower use. But the City Council could consider a few different enhancements to address noise. First, the City Council consider what the City of Burlingame has done with a zone approach where leaf blowers are used, are allowed to be used in certain neighborhoods of the City of Burlingame on certain days of the week. So, for example, Neighborhood A can use a leaf blower on Mondays and Tuesdays, and Neighborhood B would be allowed to have leaf blower use on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Another enhancement to the ordinance could be narrowing the time restrictions. And then, a third possible enhancement of the ordinance would be expanding where these restrictions apply to, because I had, as I went over on a previous slide, the restrictions currently only apply to residentially zoned neighborhoods and neighborhoods bordering residentially zoned areas. The second policy option is a ban on gas leaf blower use. Over 20 cities in California have opted to ban gas leaf blower use. This helps address greenhouse gas emissions and smog-forming emissions. Electric leaf blower use does still result in some noise. However, electric leaf blowers do not create those engine-related fumes and thus can help mitigate air quality concerns as well as human health impacts to those who operate leaf blowers. Recently, several cities have adopted new leaf blower bans, including Portola Valley, Oakland, and Nevada, and there are other cities in the process of considering them. Staff reached out to other cities who currently have a gas leaf blower ban to understand what the challenges are, and enforcement continues to be the number-one challenge with leaf blower bans. So typically, this type of ordinance relies on community members to report violations to the city's non-emergency phone number, and then enforcement is handled by the Code Enforcement Division. Oftentimes, when a code enforcement officer is available to go and investigate the violation, the subject is gone or no longer using the device, and according to our municipal code, the code enforcement officer must personally witness the violation in order to enforce the violation. Even cities with longstanding gas leaf blower bans continue to have a high volume of complaints. And in recent news, the City of Palo Alto has dedicated a full-time staff member to leaf blower ban enforcement, and Palo Alto has had their regulation in place since 2005. And then, contrasting that with cities who have recently adopted gas leaf blower bans, they also note that enforcement is a challenge for them, and rather than focusing on issuing citations, they have turned their attention to educating the community and landscapers about the new ordinance. Finally, the third option of completely banning gas and electric leaf blowers. Only a handful of cities in the state of California have done so. When considering enforcement of this type of ban, an outright ban on all mechanized leaf blowers would probably be easiest to catch because it would be very obvious when someone is in violation. All concerns related to noise and emissions and air quality and human health impacts would be addressed by an outright ban, but you would have to consider the significant impacts that would have to commercial landscapers and also to city operations. A ban on all leaf blower use would mean all residents and all commercial landscapers would need to rely on manual methods, and this would greatly increase the time it takes for commercial landscapers to complete jobs, as well as city staff in maintaining our city-owned parks. On November 9th of 2022, staff presented leaf blower regulations to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, and during the discussion, there was a variety of concerns raised. Commissioners voiced concerns that a ban on gas leaf blowers might not fully address the noise concern and that gas generators could be used to charge batteries. One commissioner was opposed to the adoption of a gas leaf blower ban because of the financial impacts to small landscaping businesses, but overall, most commissioners were in favor of a gas leaf blower ban, and some commissioners were also interested in pairing a gas leaf blower ban with limiting gas leaf blower use to, I'm sorry, with limiting leaf blower use on specific days in certain zones, like the approach that Burlingame has employed. Commissioners have expressed support of a gas leaf blower ban and regulations because of the noise impacts to the community and also the health impacts to leaf blower operators. Staff sent to mail are including a survey about leaf blower regulations to 180 landscaping businesses that have registered business license with the city in order to gain some landscaper feedback. All materials were provided, both in English and Spanish, and recipients could provide feedback in multiple ways: through an online survey, by mailing the paper survey back with the stamped envelope that was provided, or calling or emailing staff directly. In addition, staff attempted to contact 10 businesses for phone interviews. Overall, the survey showed that most survey respondents were not supportive of a gas leaf blower ban and expressed concern about the increased time it would take to complete jobs without gas leaf blowers. Respondents were concerned about being able to increase the costs to clients to cover that increased time, and multiple respondents cited the faultiness with equipment and the need for expensive repairs as barriers to electric equipment. And then, finally, there was a concern about the enforcement of the current ordinance and that our new regulation would be ignored by businesses without thorough enforcement. Survey respondents were very split regarding the time-of-use restrictions that are similar to Burlingame's. About 56% were opposed, arguing that this limitation would really constrain schedules, that clients already have specific preferences for their gardening service days, and one landscaper shared that they had too many upset clients at the time when Burlingame's regulations went into place, and so they let go all of their Burlingame clients. So, the phone interviews were focused on reaching out to landscaping companies that participated in the city's electric leaf blower rebate program. This really revealed that that population was already kind of more supportive of electric leaf blower use and already relied on electric leaf blowers, and one landscaping company actually cited horticultural best practices as a driving reason just to reduce leaf blower use overall. So, overall, there was mostly concerned landscapers who were opposed to a ban, with a few in favor of requiring electrical equipment. Feedback is needed from the City Council. If the City Council is interested in pursuing any of the three policy options that were presented, potential leaf blower regulations would impact personal household leaf blower use, commercial landscaping businesses, and city operations. It is important to consider that each of the policy options have a varying impact in terms of leaf blower-related noise pollution, air quality, human health impacts, and greenhouse gas emission reductions. And if the City Council is interested in pursuing any of the proposed policy options, staff would then initiate a robust community and commercial landscaper outreach process to get additional feedback on the policy prior to bringing any ordinance forward for the City Council's consideration. And that concludes my presentation for the City Council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea. This is the time for council to ask questions. Who would like to start?
Thank you for your presentation, Andrea. A couple of questions. Do you have an idea of approximately how many landscaping business licenses are held in the City of San Mateo?
Between 100 and 150.
Okay. I'm assuming the culpability of this and the enforcement will be pertaining to the business owners. Could there be a methodology in place for landscapers to be inspected on a yearly or every-other-year basis when renewing a business license, just to see that they've upgraded their equipment if we put a ban into place?
So, you're asking whether or not we would, through the business license process, check?
Yeah, using code enforcement to have them come to us, you know, as opposed to being relying on their word, you know?
Councilmember Newsom, this is Rich Lee, the city's finance director. I'd like to address your question, if I may.
Sure, thanks, Rich.
So, business license is under my purview as the city's finance director. Currently, when a business renews, they're able to do that online. One, our city's business license ordinance is for revenue generation purposes only. It is not meant for enforcement purposes. And as of right now, other than providing their gross receipts or confirmation that they still do business in the city, we don't have enforcement actions like that that would require a renewal. So, that'd be something that would be new to the city if that's something that the council wanted us to do.
Thank you. I guess my last question was, would there be a possibility that we would hold homeowners or landlords accountable for their landscapers? So, you know, working in an environment that I'm in, manufacturing, if I have someone and they're not working legally, like, I'm held culpable, and would, could we have something like that in place if we put a ban in place that if my landscaper was using gas, I would be fined as opposed to the landscaper?
Yeah, I think that's a possibility. There are other cities that have provided enforcement through the landowner as well.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you for your presentation and for holding it over. Do we have any understanding in real-dollar terms of the impact on small businesses of any of these changes? I know you mentioned that one landscape business owner let go all his clients in Burlingame, but, I mean, what's the real-life impact on the small business owner?
So, I think if a small business owner does not already own electric equipment, that would be a cost that they would have to incur to comply with any gas leaf blower ban, and so the cost of new equipment would be, would be one. The, what I was referencing from the survey regarding the personal experience of the landscaper working in Burlingame was related to complying with the time-of-day restrictions that Burlingame has with their zone requirements.
Yeah.
So, that impacts scheduling and the clients that businesses are able to serve.
Right. Thank you.
So, the state, as I understand it, has outlawed the sale of gas-powered leaf blowers after 2024?
Correct.
And is, have they put a state ban on it after 2026 of the use?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So, outside of a, of a new industry of a small engine repair, it looks like this will eventually cycle out?
Yeah.
The use of gas blowers?
Yeah, the state's regulations focus on new, new equipment, but as old equipment ages out, the landscaper or homeowner would not be able to buy new gas equipment after 2024.
I assume that long-term repair would be more costly than probably new equipment eventually. So, so we're going to see a final end to gas blowers in the state of California unless somebody's buying them out of state and bringing them in. Okay. That's it?
Did I read somewhere in the materials that the city had a pilot program to incentivize conversion to electric leaf blowers?
That's correct. We still will have an electric leaf blower rebate program where we provide commercial landscapers and residents, actually, with a rebate for purchasing electric equipment.
And if I recall, that program was very small, but within its smallness was relatively successful.
Yeah, we've had over 30 resident rebates and eight commercial landscaping rebates. And I'll also take this time to mention that the state also has a rebate program called CORE that commercially, it's specifically for commercial landscapers.
So, another option we could take in addition to the three or in conjunction with them, some of them would be to really try and expand that some of them would be to really try and expand that incentive program and educate people.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Vice Mayor Nash has brought up another question for me. So would it be possible, when somebody applies for the rebate here, to also direct them to the state's rebates?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that would be something I'd be very in favor of.
Andrea, I was hoping you could share a little bit about the enforcement process and if there's any data on enforcement that would be helpful to share as well.
In addition to what I walked you through about how, when a complaint comes in, I don't have any data beyond that, what I provided. Can you?
So for the public's understanding, calling in non-emergent hotline for complaints and then that getting assigned to code enforcement and then code enfor- so this is a really different model than, for example, emergency response.
Correct.
So I think it would just be helpful for the public's understanding to elaborate on that process and some of the timelines around it.
Sure, and I think this is the process that most cities take on with a gas leaf blower ban, is that they'll take in complaints or calls through a non-emergency phone call that's then forwarded or assigned to a code enforcement officer. A code enforcement officer isn't always available to go out right away, but when they do have the time, I think that especially in the case of leaf blowers, sometimes the violation is no longer occurring, the person is gone, or they're not using it while they are on the site. And then the code enforcement officer isn't able to make a citation without actually witnessing that violation personally. So they could take the time to provide education about the city's regulations at that time.
Thank you. And just as sort of an example or reference point, when we were looking at reach codes for building electric, for example, one of the exclusions that was explicitly made was around commercial kitchens because, because by and large, there isn't, there isn't sort of a comparable market-ready alternative for commercial kitchens to completely eliminate their gas operations. So, or their operations that are reliant on gas appliances. And so I just was, you know, I think as an a way of context in terms of the move towards electric, the move towards green energy and the considerations that the city has made in the past, factoring in market conditions, commercial availability, the impact to businesses, that, you know, it would be helpful for you to share a little bit about the thinking around that.
So in terms of leaf blower technology?
In terms of the way that we structured our, our reach codes with the exemptions to commercial businesses.
Right.
Commercial restaurants specifically.
I think you've summarized well what our reach codes require of new construction, all newly constructed buildings in San Mateo have to be all-electric. And then the exceptions are specifically where there are no available comparable technologies that can be available electric. So that, so developers and property owners are able to apply for an exception and are granted that on a case-by-case basis.
Great. And so, and that was done and crafted with commercial restaurants in mind, I think, in fact, during in the impact to businesses. Those are my questions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Andrea. You mentioned some of the costs for people to invest in new electric equipment, but could you remind us about how much in gas fuel costs, for example, the city incurs with its leaf blowers?
I- I'm sorry, Commissioner Lorraine, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lorraine. I do not remember, Parks had provided that estimate for me, but I do not have those numbers offhand of annual fuel costs versus, yeah, of using the gas leaf blowers. I do remember that it was less expensive to purchase fuel for the gas leaf blowers overall compared to using the estimates that we're calculating for going electric right now.
But, but did you find that in a broader time horizon, given the cost of fuel versus like an initial investment in electric equipment potentially offset through rebates, there may be the potential to incur savings or at least be cost-neutral?
I think in the long term, looking far out, there could be some cost parity, but I think there's some heavy upfront costs that Parks needs to consider because I mentioned that electrical upgrades needed at the main shop. Those really, those are a large upfront costs to meet this electric transition.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Now's the time to open up for a public comment on this agenda item. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two speaker slips in person. We'll take those first. If you want to speak and you're in the audience, please bring me up a yellow speaker slip right away. And please raise your hand if you're on the Zoom call and would like to speak about the leaf blower item, item number 15. And I'll take the in-person speakers first, Carol Wilhemmy.
Benzene, formaldehyde, acetaldehyde, and 1,3 butadiene. These are some of the carcinogenic substances that I and the leaf blower equipment operator get exposed to. The number-one reason to ban the use of gas leaf blowers is to protect the health of San Mateo residents, not to mention the health of the leaf blower operators themselves. Exposing neighbors to toxic, cancer-causing emissions is just wrong, but this inconsiderate behavior will continue as long as there is no ordinance in effect. My neighbor's landscape maintenance person blows dust and debris onto my property every single time he comes. I can see it coming over the back fence as I stand at my kitchen window, and I can see it coming onto my front walkway from my office. I have to keep my windows closed. The use of any type of leaf blower is inappropriate. At least I can protect myself from the noise with noise-canceling headphones, but why should I have to do that inside my own home? The dumb thing is that my neighbor's property doesn't look any better after the blowing is completed. Thank you in advance for doing the right thing and banning the use of these polluting engines, which serve no great purpose this year. Please, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Schneider.
Hello, Council. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the San Mateo Climate Action Team. Thank you for taking up this issue and for allowing me to speak. We have submitted a letter to you with our recommendations, so I will try to be brief. We recommend that the city council adopt policy option two and ban the use of all gasoline-powered landscaping equipment in San Mateo effective January 1, 2026, if not sooner. As staff has reported, the environmental damage done by one hour of gasoline-powered leaf blowers is equivalent to the emissions from driving a Toyota Camry for 1,100 miles. Given that the state of California has banned the sale of new gasoline-powered leaf blowers and other equipment as of January 1, 2024, but we can't wait for existing gas-powered landscaping equipment to die out, especially given the latest IPCC report that states that we must stop burning fuel, fossil fuel by 2030 to reduce future escalating impacts of climate change. We do recognize the banning gas leaf blowers would represent a hardship for many landscapers, so the city should continue to work with landscapers to help them identify the financial assistance already available and perhaps offer more than the current rebates for purchase of electric landscaping equipment. In addition, SAMCAT recommends that the city department use alternative landscaping methods that include leaving leaves on the ground, letting the grass grow longer, and trimming shrubbery less often. This would reduce the need for leaf blowers and other powered landscaping tools. The city should develop a program to educate the public on the benefits of doing the same on their properties. Leaf litter is nature's best mulch. Finally, the city should immediately enforce the widely ignored operating hours for leaf blowers and enforce the limits on noise levels. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving to the remote speakers now. We have two speakers with their hand raised. Jeff will be speaking first, followed by Michael. Michael will be our last speaker. Please go ahead, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff here. I would just like to say that I have to say, with all due respect, I'm tired of the inaction by the city council. The only brave way forward on this is to ban them. All of this time spent about trying to figure out a way to modify this plan, it's feckless, it won't work. The only way to do it is, I agree with the first two speakers, these are highly dangerous instruments. We need to get serious. In order to establish San Mateo's green credentials, what we have in place right now is ridiculous. They basically can go from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Saturday, no restrictions, no enforcement. Every single holiday that falls on a Monday, of which they're banned, they are used, every single one. I call, there's no solution. And I don't blame, you know, San Mateo City Police for not racing out for a leaf blower, but there's no enforcement. I promise you, I live on, off of West San Andres, they go all the time, they're highly detrimental to just peace. I mean, forget what they're doing to the workers, forget what they're doing to the environment, it's just taking away the simple joys of enjoying a conversation with a neighbor, enjoying a nap, enjoying what we should be entitled to. And these things are noxious and loud, and they're two-stroke engines, and they're just nonsense. So I'm tired of this bantering about, about how we might modify or make it less cost-prohibitive. It's ridiculous. Let's get serious and deal with this issue like other towns around us are doing. We're on the wrong side of history on this, and we need to get going. Ban them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael. Please go ahead, Michael.
This is Michael Grubb. I'm in District 1. First of all, I would second and agree completely with everything that Jeff just said. Secondly, I'd like to ask the city staff member, the survey that was sent out, was that sent out in English and Spanish?
It was.
It was. Okay, good. What I would also say is that it's obvious that enforcement of any kind of ordinance is not going to happen. It's not happening now. There are people in our district out blowing at 8:01 in the morning, and then nobody runs those things on low volume. They're always revved up. And if you try to speak with them, you cannot because none of them speak English. And it's very difficult, I would say, to enforce any regulation with people that you cannot communicate with. I think this, the leaf blowers have basically become a crutch. These are not landscaping companies, these are leaf-blowing, lawn-mowing companies, and they just whip them out and blow away with no regard for, as the previous woman spoke about their neighbors. And we have seen the city employees in Baywood Park, there may be two leaves on a path, and they'll come down and blow the entire path, raising all sorts of the fugitive dust previously, previously mentioned. And in the old days, there used to be things called rakes, and I did see a picture of one, and those caused no pollution. The only energy they caused is human energy. Yes, they may take more time to use, to use, but that's something we should be willing to pay for, for an environment. And finally, Mr. Hedges is naive if he thinks that there will not be gas engines around if they're not banned. The people in Cuba have kept American cars of 50 and 60 years old going. There are still old Volkswagens running around here, and you can bet that if people don't, if people are permitted to have gas-powered leaf blowers and they're not banned, they will have them imported, they will fix them, they will use them, because it's the quick, easy, and lazy thing to do. So I certainly encourage and agree with Jeff that you guys need to fish or cut bait, ban these things, ban the gas ones. At a minimum, it'd be better to even ban the electric. It looks like the discussion's been going on for 10, 15 years. It's ridiculous. It's not that hard, so please do something. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last speaker.
Thank you. We will close public comment, and this is the time for our council to ask any additional questions or give direction. Who would like to start?
So I want to thank Andrea again for her presentation and thank those who gave public comment. I generally agree with all the public comment, and I especially appreciate some of the reminders, including that there's a human health concern to consider here in addition to the smog-based emissions that come from gas leaf blowers, noise pollution, and more. I also think that there is some potential value in the city pursuing a ban in addition to the carb brewing in AB 1346 prohibiting the sale of gas leaf blowers beginning in 2024 in the state, because I think other cities have determined that may not be enough, and there may be loopholes, and people may find ways to get them into the state anyway and, and continue to use them for extended periods of time. And I think we can complement the previous ruling and, and help close the loophole and see to the, the goal of making a healthier city by pursuing a gas ban. But before I forget, I just want to mention that I also think it would be useful to consider an ordinance that allows for a zoning-based approach to the use of them and potentially giving each part of the city a reprieve from the impacts of even the electric leaf blowers if we keep them, somewhat like Burlingame, perhaps. I'm not wedded to the exact parameters, and so I appreciate, Andrea, you noting that there's an opportunity to conduct some more outreach with what other cities may be doing in addition to Burlingame. And I will, you know, look forward to the next opportunity to review your findings. I appreciate the outreach to landscape feedback, the landscape operators. I do think some of, you know, it overall did seem mixed to me, and, and I got the impression that some may have interpreted the question about the, how the Burlingame-style kind of ordinance would impact them a bit differently than perhaps we were hoping. I felt, I saw a number of answers that seemed to indicate concern about only being able to operate once a week in the city, for example, which I think is not what we were necessarily proposing. You know, if you have clients throughout the city, you can still potentially operate and serve all those clients, it just wouldn't be all on one day. It could be on different days throughout the week. So I, I think that's unfortunate, but it did make me think that there may not be quite as much negative feeling if that were to be communicated in future outreach. You know, I appreciate that there will be some financial investment required. One of the reasons why council has been debating this for a long time is because of concern for the operators and cost burdens to them. It's one of the reasons why council went ahead with a rebate program first to try and help mitigate that. But now that we have this California law, this is going to have to happen at some point anyway for all operators in the state, and it's coming up soon. You know, I think in the previous meeting held with the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission in last November, there was a, you had mentioned that equipment for gas could last around eight to 10 years. I won't hold you to it, but I think like with this law passed- But I think like, with this law passing in 2021 to take effect in 2024, you know, at some point, you know, we're getting, I feel like we're looking already with our ordinance at like the halfway point, even if people had bought new stuff right at the announcement of that law. And I think we are looking not necessarily to have this take effect immediately, but I appreciate the comments about considering 2026 as a possible effective date for it, to give operators some time to prepare, and to give us the opportunity to conduct more outreach, education, and potentially even, you know, offer the rebates we currently have in addition with the state rebates, and maybe even increase what we are offering as a city. I think that would be fantastic if that were possible. So overall, I think I'm interested in a zone-based approach to having operation only occur within some parts of the city on any particular day to give people a break. And I am interested in pursuing a ban of gas leaf blowers with an effective date in the future, potentially 2026, but I'm, I could defer to another date if council wills it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. There is no question that these leaf blowers, gas leaf blowers, have a bad impact on the environment. No one disagrees with that. No one disagrees with the fact, though, that any city, including Palo Alto, that has had this ban since 2005, still can't enforce it. So we've got something we want to do, and then the reality of how to do it. And I'm also incredibly concerned about the economic health and the fiscal health of the landscape business owners and operators and employees. So rather than doing a ban, which even if we got rid of, we said we're going to get rid of all leaf blowers, one of our public speakers said he's heard them at 1:00 AM. You know, that's, no one's going to be able to enforce that. It's going to continue to happen. And yes, probably the majority of people will say, there is a ban, I should be a good citizen and try not to do it. I would instead prefer to really go heavy on the incentive program, because it has a track record. We have done very little outreach and education. We could do education and outreach to the owners of the businesses, to all the people who live and employ these landscape services, and offer all types of incentives. I think there's a whole lot more opportunity out of those incentives that we could get that we're really not even beginning to tap into. And I think we also have the opportunity to partner with the Climate Action Team, with all the other groups who have been very able and honest advocates for the health and well-being of everyone, to get the word out. So I am not ready yet to recommend a ban on gas leaf blowers. I would want to do everything we can to incentivize electric and incentivize rakes. But as we've heard with our own Parks and Rec, there's a huge impact in doing that as well. And it would be great, but, you know, I don't know how realistic that is. So I would really want to see how we could beef up the incentive program and the outreach and education program. Thank you.
I would not be in favor of a zone requirement for people where they could only be in a certain area a certain day of the week. I think it's impossible to enforce. I think it's going to be confusing, probably to property owners as well as the gardeners. I'm very heavy on incentives. I think there should be incentives. I think when people apply for their business license each year, they should be sent, and they may already be doing that, the city may be doing that, notice of the incentives that are available, not only from the city, but from the state of California. I will say that I could be talked into outlawing gas blowers in R1 neighborhoods, but not with, not with commercial. Commercial is just too large, and I think that equipment will wear out fast, and with a proper incentive program, it will go away eventually. The requirement of four to five batteries in commercial areas, maybe for one job, quite frankly, they are noisy, but they also do cut the time for getting the job done and decreases the cost to the consumer. So I wouldn't do away with electric. So if a consensus arrives that we should outlaw them in R1 neighborhoods, then I would vote for that. If the consensus is both R1 and commercial neighborhoods, I would not vote for that. For some of the same reasons I already said, I think eventually they will go away in the commercial neighborhoods, or commercial areas as well. Let me see, anything else? Oh, the taking effect, I would be okay with as soon as, say, mid-year July 2024 with R1 neighborhoods. Again, with a heavy emphasis on incentives. And also, if people are cited, they at least get one freebie in the first couple of years. So that's all I have for right now, based on other comments. I may have refined comments of my own.
Andrea, could you pull up a couple of answers from the slides for me real fast? So you mentioned that there was between 100 and 150 businesses, we believe, that are landscapers in the city of San Mateo. Can you tell me how many responses we've had from our outreach survey so far? I know it was on a slide, I just didn't see it. I didn't get to write a town festive.
Yes, give me one moment.
Thanks. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay. I'm trying to beat Martin to it. Let's see. Screen two.
Yep.
There were 17 responses to the survey in English, and one response to the survey in Spanish.
So we're getting about a 10% or less response rate, probably?
Oh, out of the, yeah, the number that were sent. Yeah, over 150 were sent.
Okay. So we have a, it's a 10% response? Okay. And then you said only one response was in Spanish, all the rest were in English?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, do we have any idea of these landscapers? I know they're all small businesses and mostly minority-owned. Do we have any idea how many, like, have an actual commercial address versus working from a home? Because my experience is that most of these people are working in apartments, and so I kind of have a concern about, you know, fire and code. I mean, if, how are they going to charge and have infrastructure to charge these in a two-bedroom apartment or a small home?
I do not have a sense of how many addresses are personal addresses versus business addresses, but I will say, charging infrastructure is definitely a concern, especially when considering a landscaper might be away from, you know, their home or their business for the entire day, so they would have to find a place to charge. I think it is conceivable that you might be able to charge at a client's home and then bring those batteries with you along, but that is a logistical challenge to think through, for sure.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, well, I think where I fall is very similar to many of my colleagues. I think I'm comfortable with, you know, residential, a residential ban going into place probably in a year and a half. I think with commercial, I think it, I think we need to pull back on that a little. I think that even commercial will at some point in the not-so-distant future disappear just because the limited availability of gas-powered equipment. I would like to see us double down and really, really do deeper outreach to getting that other 90% of people, make them aware of the rebates that we're giving as a city, and the state of California is also giving. And, sorry, what was the third question? Zoning, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it makes sense to try to, thank you. I don't think it makes sense to try to enforce zoning, just because it's just one more thing that we won't be able to enforce. And, and like I think Rich said, it's very confusing as is. I think, I would like to see us, you know, make sure that we stick to our operating hours, especially in residential neighborhoods, because I hate nothing more than being woken up at 9:01 on Saturday when the neighbors start blowing. But, but yeah, I think those are my comments and my feedback. Thank you.
I, you know, I appreciate the thought that's gone into this and the effort over many years. For me, I, you know, my approach to policy is, is I want to, I want to be effective, compassionate, and fair. I, just straight away, have a really hard time stomaching imposing a regulation on small business owners that we ourselves, as a city and municipality, have not opted into. That is, for me, a double standard, that I just, I can't overlook that. When we, as a municipality, look at our community members and the financial hardship that this could actually impose on them, when we ourselves have not subjected ourselves to this transition, it is, I think, I think it's wrong. And I do not support that direction. I do not support exploring an exception for the city. I don't think that we should be setting policy that standardizes controls over small business operators that we cannot implement and have not implemented. And so until the city goes first, I don't think that this should be up for discussion. From the standpoint of just being compassionate, compassionate to community members who I appreciate have noise concerns, have health concerns for themselves, for their neighbors, for the operators, you know, I myself am a public health professional. I very deeply appreciate the environmental impact of using gas, and natural gas. And the city has taken very aggressive, you know, steps in terms of our leadership on sustainability. However, I feel that the level of input from the folks, the small business owners, that will be directly impacted, leaves me very uncomfortable making decisions in an informed way. So for that reason, I just have a really hard time even contemplating taking this up. Lastly, you know, just in terms of the consideration of being effective, and how do we, as a municipality with limited resources, knowing the constraints on enforcement, knowing the realities of enforcement, not just in our own municipality, but all of our neighboring cities? I agree with Deputy Mayor Nash that, that really, where we will see the most return on investment is not doubling down on a ban that has almost no possibility of true enforcement. The fact that our expert in the room can't provide any data on enforcement at all in the city should be paused, should give us all pause. So we are not here for theater. We're not here for symbolism. We are here to enact effective policy, and that means that we need to take into consideration enforcement. And if we don't have a clear path for enforcement, then I struggle to see what the purpose is we're trying to achieve. The city, the state has set very clear objectives that will force a transition. The question is, is the city going to step up to support that transition? And do we support it with a carrot or a stick? My preference, my strong preference, I think the compassionate, the effective, and the fair approach is through incentivizing this transition. I think the support opportunities that I see are enhanced integrations with the business license, registration process. I think that that is absolutely worth pursuing. Where can we capture those business owners, help educate them, help bring them into the rebate program? Like we have done with other sustainability initiatives, like for example, the induction cooktop loan program. Maybe we should be thinking about a pilot loan program for, for electric leaf blowers. Maybe we should be thinking about a phased payment program that could be grant-based. These are the ways that I think that we could effectively support transition. I do not think it is wise or economical to be setting policy that we all agree cannot be enforced. And I just don't think that we have enough information from the key stakeholders that will be directly impacted. So I would like to ask everyone, given what I've said, to, you know, what, you know, where we are, so that we're providing very clear direction, and where is their consensus?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
Okay. Your mic? It's on. So a couple of things. I don't like any of the two-stroke movements. I even dislike more than leaf blowers, the two-cycle scooters. They're bigger motors, they're noisier, and they put out a lot more pollution. Has the state outlawed those?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
You know, that would be like mopeds and Cushman's and those kinds of scooters.
I don't know of any legislation outlawing scooters, no.
See, my point is that we really need to take a firm hand on everything if we're going to do it. And the other thing, and I really hate to do this to the chief, but I'm going to ask if he knows, if he could tell us how, how good a control they've had on doing citations for people violating the smoking ban in multifamily, sorry, chief, because that would give us an indication, I think, of how much luck we would have with the, with the gardeners.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. With regard to the smoking ordinance, we really don't get that many complaints. It's a complaint-based program, and we only respond if we do get a complaint of someone who shares a common wall and is violating that ordinance. We do refer those to code enforcement, similar to what this type of ordinance would look like, and our focus is on education. So to answer your question, there, we have not run into enforcement challenges, so to speak, on a regular basis, just because we haven't received that many complaints.
And have there been any citations?
No, we have not issued any citations for that ordinance.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
So, and I think actually, there's, I'm glad you brought up the smoking ordinance, because I think that there's, you know, a comparable issue that we have with the ban on smoking in, in multifamily units. And it's a similar challenge where people are doing it in their, in privacy of their own home. It needs to be witnessed and is therefore unenforceable. And is, you know, while it is well-intentioned, it is, it causes a lot of frustration from the public, who know that this is on the books, call, and then, and then only to realize that, you know, if it's not directly witnessed by one of, you know, by a responding cop, which it almost never is, or literally never has been, then, then there's nothing that we can do. So, you know, I just, again, like, I ask the, you know, I ask my colleagues, like, are we here for symbolism?
are we here for symbolism? Or are we here to do policy? Right? So I, you know, I think, you know, the staff is asking for clear direction. I, I heard from Deputy Mayor Nash, there's a strong preference for an incentive approach. I, I would like to ask my other colleagues to clarify their position. Is there a majority of council that would support taking an incentive-based approach and not a ban?
I was clear in my statement that I wanted stronger incentives. And I also want information on the state, no matter what we do. I want the incentive programs increased. And in my statement, I said, if there was a consensus on the council, that I would agree with a ban on residential. But I would prefer also to have a strong incentive program.
I'm certainly interested in pursuing incentive-based next steps. I, I appreciate a lot of the mayor's comments and feel I agree with many of them. You know, I, I agree that we should not be in the business of imposing rules on others that the city itself is not, you know, able to fulfill. Of course, the city has been working toward this goal through its pilot project, and I would like us to continue in that way, in that direction. In fact, the city of San Francisco apparently put forth a plan that had a more phased approach that put larger restriction and a tighter timeline on the city's municipal operations, phasing out of gas equipment in favor of electric, and giving a broader timeline to operators outside of the municipality. I would be interested in pursuing something like that. And, and so I, I'm just hoping that this conversation can continue. You know, but, you know, I, I also just want to give a, I, I think I agree that I'm not, I'm, I'm also not interested in theater or performative laws and ordinances, but I also think that there's a non-zero value to what's being proposed by the zoning approach. I had a, a conversation with the, the city manager about it and got a, a bit of sense on, you know, how, how it's going in Burlingame, for example. And, you know, the, what I heard was that there, there was some non-zero value in having the law, even if it couldn't be enforced all the time. I would, I would consider that, you know, it would not shock me if that were to be the case with the smoking ordinance as well, for similar reasons. You know, one of those being that a non-zero number of people will follow a law because it's the law. And that said, I'll concede that I don't have, I, I didn't do a study on that. And so I don't know what the numbers are, you know? I don't, I don't know how much value they're getting out of it. And I do want to, in general, be data-driven with our approach. So, given that, I, I am, I am aligned in, in taking incentive-based next steps.
Thank you. And I want to clarify that I would be interested in exploring a phased transition for the city and setting a clear timeline or in goal for our own transition in, in, as a parallel approach to, to rolling out the incentive program. So that, for me, is absolutely on the table.
Hooray.
Councilmember Hedges?
I think there's definitely a five-member consensus for increasing the, the, the money for people to buy new equipment. And I like the idea of getting the city on board, too. And I don't think we have a consensus, I don't hear it, if I'm wrong, please tell me, for, for doing any, any ordinances banning either residential or commercial. Does anybody hear a consensus on that?
Nope.
No? So, so I think that's off the table.
And I guess I would also add, I heard a lot of consensus about education and finding new education partners. And who knows, maybe there is, there's such a thing as community pressure, right? So if, if neighborhoods, who's got the quietest neighborhood in San Mateo, or who's, who knows what that is? But really doing the outreach to ask people what would motivate, in addition to just saying, you know, we'll give you some money.
And noise is, depends on what's putting it out. Where I grew up, if somebody didn't have their baffles in their motorcycle, they got a significant citation. Here, nobody has baffles in their motorcycles. Very noisy. So it depends on whose toy, I think, sometimes it's making the noise that irritates us. But, and the noise is not going to go away with electric. The electrics are, I think, louder, if you have a powerful one, than, than the gas blowers. So noise is not going to be abated. It actually might be noisier using the electrics. So we have no consensus. I'm for the incentives. What do we need to do?
Councilmember Newsom? Sorry?
No problem. I don't really have much more to add. I agree with you, you know, if, if we don't have a way to enforcement, enforce this, and there's no way to, to put teeth to it, then, you know, we're legislating for the purpose of, you know, nothing, really. The, the point is, we, we want this to be something that works, and if it's, if it's not enforceable, then it doesn't really make sense to move forward with, with that legislation. I would obviously like to see, as I think we've all said over and over again, really, really more education and outreach. And, you know, that could be to homeowners, too, you know, trying to hold homeowners responsible for the fact that they're hiring a gardener that's using antiquated technology as opposed to the newest technology. I think, you know, a lot of these business owners are minority-owned, small businesses. I don't know that they can be strapped with that, and I don't know that they're going to have the infrastructure, which I was saying, to be able to charge, you know? And that's really a big concern. And that I, even to have, like, I'm thinking of the fire chief, I saw him, he's back there earlier. I was thinking, oh my gosh, can you imagine they're going to have nine chargers in a one-bedroom apartment? And, and, you know, there's that really scare, that will start a fire, you know? So I think, I think I'm in consensus with most of you. I'd like to see us continue to do more outreach, and I'd also like the city to be, you know, the first person to actually get to that full electric. And maybe we want to put a timetable to that of a year and a half or two years, that we phase out all gas, you know, for the city first. And once we've done that, it puts us in much better standing for being, you know, leading the way and being able to roll that out to, to our gardeners and small business owners, landscapers. So that's my input. Thank you.
I guess, to, one reaction to that, I would want to ask Director McGrini to weigh in and, rather than us say, you know, that would be very important. And then the other thing, in terms of what kind of incentives could we put out? Could we put out a call to the community to say, we all want to get to electric and start a community fund that people could contribute to, to help motivate the, the transition? Just another idea.
So, through the mayor? I, I think I'm, I'm hearing consensus on three things. Number one is work on a more robust incentive-based program. Number two, work on community outreach and engagement and education on the use of the electric tools. And number three, come up with a, a plan and a timeline for when the city will make that transition as well. And so if, if there's consensus on that, we can take that direction and come back to council at a future date with information on all three of those items.
That is a great summary. I think you captured it all. Thank you. Do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay. Does anyone need a break? Are we okay? Are we okay? Okay. Next, we will move on to old business. Item 16, General Plan Update, Review Council Direction on Land Use Heights and densities and Measure Y. Looks like we have a presentation from our Deputy Director of Community Development, Okay, thank you very much. Are we ready for our presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Zach Dahl, Deputy Director with the City's Community Development Department. I'm here before you this evening on the topic of the City's General Plan Update effort, and specifically land use heights and densities and Measure Y. As we go ahead and get started, I do want to first acknowledge the team of city staff, both on the core team and our technical advisory committee, as well as our consultant team that is supporting this effort that has been going on about four and a half years now. For tonight's meeting, we do have a couple of objectives that we are looking for direction on. The first one would be the base densities and heights that should be incorporated into the General Plan Update, and then how Measure Y should be addressed as part of the General Plan Update. To provide you with a project overview, this is aligned with the presentation from last March meeting, our study session this past month, so I will move through it rather quickly. But I can also go back to any slides if you have any questions. The General Plan Update does start with our vision statement and the values, and this basically forms the basis for how we have crafted and built the General Plan. We also have completed a number of milestones since this effort was initially started back in fall of 2018, with most recently in the last fall, getting through our draft goals, policies, and actions. And we are currently preparing the draft General Plan for publication later this year. So right now, we are preparing the draft General Plan and looking to publish that beginning of the summer. The draft Environmental Impact Report is currently targeted to publish in August, and that does keep us on track to bring back, come back to council for final, for consideration of a final General Plan beginning of 2024. I also want to highlight the community engagement that has gone on as part of our General Plan Update effort. We have focused significant resources on engaging as many members of the community as we can over the course of this four-and-a-half-year effort. And that does include 43 public meetings before our General Plan Subcommittee, Planning Commission, and City Council, as well as 23 community workshops, over 20 pop-up events, online activities, and multiple citywide newsletters. Another element that I want to highlight was our community survey, which was conducted last year. This was a statistically significant survey that asked a range of questions of the community, including a number of land use and housing-related questions. It was administered in English and in Spanish beginning of last year, and the results were presented to City Council this past March, a year ago March. One particular finding that stood out that was a factor when the, the City Council provided direction on our, our alternatives last spring, was that there was support for increased height around the community if it was concentrated around transit, and if that trade-off allowed for increased open space and recreational amenities, as well as minimizing changes to our existing neighborhoods. Moving forward after tonight's meeting, we are looking at three meetings before council to discuss the draft General Plan this fall, and then up to three meetings, end of '23, beginning of '24, to consider adoption of the Environmental Impact Report and General Specifically for this evening, we are looking at the land use categories that will go into the updated land use map in the draft General Plan. Right here, we do have a snapshot of the draft land use map for the full city. And then here we have our land uses just within our 10 study areas. And as part of the framework for our General Plan Update, the growth and change is focused within these 10 study areas, which do focus, align with our El Camino Real Corridor, our three Caltrain stations, and then a couple of sites identified for growth and change, including the Bridgepoint Shopping Center and some other opportunity areas. The rest of the land use map is proposed to align with our current General Plan map, and it would be consistent with the limits set by Measure Y. The height and ra, and density range that was introduced at the study session last month introduced a tiered approach that started from very low up to high, too. And you can see the correlating height ranges and density ranges that go along with those. And these intensities focus on both residential and mixed use, land use categories, but there is some correlation with office and commercial as well. Another graphic that we had initially presented was the concept of Floria ratio and how it aligns with heights and utilization of a site. And as you can see, increased heights do allow for more articulation within a building massing, and also do provide more opportunities for open space or other, other areas of the site being retained for other uses. Building off of our land use map, once adopted, we would be looking to update our zoning code. And the zoning code is really where the General Plan is implemented. It, it specifies more specific height and density limits, along with other site standards, and it builds on the ranges that are identified in the land use map. And so with that concept, not all zoning districts will allow for the maximum either height or density that is specified within the land use category, and that's why each land use category has a range rather than a specific number. In terms of timing, we would be looking to update our zoning code and our zoning map. Once the General Plan is adopted, it would likely take one to two years or potentially longer, depending on the final version of the General Plan that is adopted. And there would be additional outreach and engagement, as well as public meetings before the Planning Commission and council as part of the adoption process there. Moving on to Measure Y and how it could align with the General Plan Update. Right now, Measure Y is a voter-approved ballot initiative that was most recently approved in November of 2020, and it carried forward the heightened density limits set by Measure P. And currently, it does have a sunset date of 2030. Generally speaking, Measure Y includes a height limit of up to 55 feet and a density limit of up to 50 dwelling units per acre. And there are certain exceptions in certain areas of the city if certain circumstances, such as community benefits or affordable housing, are provided. It is also worth noting that state density bonus law does allow projects to exceed those limits when certain amounts of affordable housing are provided. And we also do want to note that any components within the updated General Plan that are inconsistent with Measure Y would require voter approval before they could go into effect. In terms of Measure Y alignment with the draft General Plan, it would continue to apply Measure Y requirements until the, either the measure sunsets or voters provide a different direction. The public review draft will include Measure Y as an appendix, but would not include text woven into the land use element itself. We are including a specific policy that would specify if there are any inconsistencies between Measure Y and the General Plan, we would defer to Measure Y to set the limit. And then also Measure Y would be referenced within each of the land use designations with regard to density and height. with regard to density and height. In terms of a Measure Y alignment timeline, we are looking at winter of '24 for potential adoption of the EIR and updated general plan. This would then move forward with consideration of an initiative to modify Measure Y in the spring of '24, with a target to have an adopted resolution from the council in May or June, and that would keep us on track to bring a ballot initiative before the voters in November of '24. So as noted, this topic was originally discussed by the council at a study session on March 6th. Following a staff presentation, community input, clarifying questions and deliberation, there was direction provided with regard to the heightened density range, and that included identifying that the framework as proposed by staff was appropriate to move forward into the draft general plan with two changes. One was to set the maximum height for office high at seven stories, and the other was to remove High 2 from residential and mixed use from the land use map, and this would allow up to 200 units an acre and 10 stories. The second piece with regard to Measure Y was to support the framework proposed by staff with a target to bring an updated ballot initiative before the voters in November of '24 with two additional directions, one of which was to conduct a statistically significant survey to test ballot feasibility, and then the other was to ensure robust outreach to all members of the community in upcoming phases, and with a focus on materials that were legible and easy for all to understand. So for this evening's meeting, based on direction provided at the March 20th meeting, there was interest in bringing this back to clarify the direction that was provided, ensure that we are moving forward in a direction that is consistent with where council wants to see the general plan update go. And so, as noted in the agenda report, there are four questions that we are looking for direction from the council on this evening. The first of which is about the High 2 for residential and mixed-use land use designations, and if it should be included on the draft land use map. The second part was if the environmental impact report should study a land use map with the High 2 for mixed use and residential. And then the second piece where there are two questions was with regard to that statistically significant survey. Should it be conducted during the general plan update process? And if so, when should it be conducted? And staff's really identified two areas where a survey could align with our current timeline for the general plan update. The first would be during the general plan outreach this summer, and then the second one would be after the completion of the draft general plan phase later into the fall and the winter. With regard to the land use considerations, we did want to note that removal of the High 2 from the land use map would or could reduce the 20-year growth estimates by approximately 1,000 units. These are estimates, and there's a variety of factors that could ultimately influence our 20-year growth projections, but removal of that highest density category would remove approximately 1,000 units if everything else held constant. With regard to evaluation of the High 2 in the environmental impact report, preparation of technical studies began last August, following council's direction on the preferred land use alternative in July, and so right now, a majority of those technical studies have been completed, and they did include High 2 as part of those considerations. So right now, the environmental impact report is moving forward, evaluating the High 2 as part of the land use map. If there was direction to remove it from the EIR evaluation, that would definitely delay publication of the draft EIR, as we would have to revise those technical studies. It is also worth noting, as you're probably aware, the EIR can study a more ambitious growth scenario, even if that isn't the final land use map that's selected by council, so you will have the benefit of seeing that study, and then if you chose to adopt a land use map that had a lower growth projection, there would not be any issue or inconsistency between the EIR and the general plan. Right now, staying on target to publish the draft EIR in August, that would start a 45-day public review period, and during that period, we would also hold a public meeting to solicit input, and then that would ultimately move forward to a final EIR for council's consideration at the end of the year. We did also want to highlight exactly where in the city the High, mixed-use, and residential land use designations are currently proposed, and this is based on the alternative selected by council last year. As you can see, mixed-use High and residential High 1 and 2 are primarily located within the half-mile TOD areas around our three Caltrain stations, with the notable exception of the Bridgepoint Shopping Center, as that has been identified as an opportunity site for housing. You can also see there is a larger opportunity site adjacent to 101, which is just right on the edge of that Hayward Park TOD area, and that is also one of the city's housing opportunity sites, as it is an underutilized office park currently. You can also see on this graphic that then a number of these sites that have this High designation are pipeline projects, meaning there is already a project that has been entitled on these sites, and also a number of these sites do have existing buildings that exceed the height limit set by Measure Y. And so, we wanted to highlight both of these because these are sites that would probably not see a new project under the High density and height limits over this 20-year period because they either already have an entitled project, or they already have an existing building that would likely remain during this 20-year period. Moving to the questions regarding the statistically significant survey, we did want to provide a timeline, and this can provide some insight as to those two windows that staff identified without impacting the overall schedule of the general plan update. So you can see, the first potential window where a survey could be conducted would be end of spring through summer of this year, and that would align with when we are doing our draft general plan publication, as well as our outreach and engagement. The other one that could make sense a little bit further into the schedule would be after the draft general plan phase has been completed, we would then initiate the survey, and then those results would be ready for presentation when you're considering adoption of the general plan in winter of '24. And so with this first window, the target would be to have the survey results ready when council considers the draft general plan this fall. Some considerations to keep in mind when you're considering the question about if and when to conduct a survey is a statistically reliable survey will generally cost between $30,000 and $35,000 to conduct, and usually will take around four to five months from inception to having the results ready for publication. Conducting the survey before the publication of the draft general plan, thus delaying publication of the draft general plan, would eliminate our ability to have a ballot initiative ready by November of 2024. And so that is why staff is recommending that either of the survey windows be held concurrent with the current general plan timeline, rather than holding up the timeline to complete the survey. Also, another aspect of this would be what group should be surveyed when the survey is conducted. Earlier, surveys have been community-wide and focused on a mix equivalent to our demographic makeup. We could also look at registered voters or likely voters, and considering that this is, would be informing decision-making that would ultimately guide a ballot initiative, staff would recommend that likely voters should be the pool that is surveyed. And then, as noted earlier, we have the two windows of one would most align with the current general plan update timeline for when a survey could be conducted. Also do want to acknowledge the public comments that have been coming in since publication of the agenda report. As of 3:30 this afternoon, we had received 106 written comments. These have all been posted to the city's general plan update website, StriveSanMateo.org, and then they all have been passed along to the council as well. There were a couple of themes that were prevalent in many of the comments coming in. Most notably was expressions of concern related to the proposed land uses around 25th Avenue. There were also a number of comments related to supporting the height and density limits set by Measure Y, and then there was also a number of comments that expressed support for maintaining the High 2 land use designation to support high-density near transit and reduce GHG emissions. With regard to the comments relating to 25th Avenue, staff did want to specifically highlight what is proposed, and does have a recommendation for how the land use map could be modified to address these concerns, while being consistent with council's earlier direction. Right now, this corridor was initially targeted with a mixed-use medium designation when the alternatives were select, during the alternatives process. Since that time, the land use map has refined our low, medium, and high to include two tiers within each category, the Low 1, Low 2, Medium 1, Medium 2, and High 1, High 2. And so, based on the input provided and consistent with council's direction to look at opportunities where the land use map could build in transitions between lower density and higher density areas, the 25th Avenue corridor, the block closest to Hacienda, it does make sense, and so staff would recommend a mixed-use Medium 1 land use designation there. And then for the parking lot, just to the west of Hacienda, which is in a residential context, staff would recommend a residential Low 2 for this site. This would be consistent with the land use on just to the east along 24th Avenue, and then also align with this principle of creating transitions to where then you have your higher heights and densities along the El Camino Real corridor. And so, along this principle, staff is also asking for council confirmation for the general plan team, as we are doing our final review of the draft land use map that goes into the general plan, to look at other opportunities along these study area edges where there is an ability to kind of turn the dial, so to speak, to create transitions, so we're avoiding any abrupt height or density transitions between low and high-density areas. So with that information before you, there really now are five questions that we are seeking input from you. The questions related to the land use map and High 2, conducting a survey and the timing of that survey, and then if there is council support for the general plan team making minor adjustments to the draft land use map, consistent with the direction both on the preferred scenario and the concept of transitioning for the draft map that goes into the general plan. And obviously, all of this would stay in draft form until final adoption, so there would continue to be opportunities for the public and council to weigh in. So with that, that does conclude staff's presentation, and we are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. This is the time for our questions. It's great to see so many community members in the room on this topic. I think, you know, just for the purpose of kind of level-setting, getting everyone on the same page, it would help to kind of step back a little bit and provide a little bit of a summary of why are we doing the general plan and what is the general plan? What purpose does it serve? And what are we trying to achieve?
So, in general, the, I mean, a general plan is the city's blueprint, and it is generally adopted for a 20-year planning horizon, and so it really guides city growth and policy decision-making over that period, and informs other more specific plans, the zoning ordinance, and other policy and planning initiatives that the city undertakes. It is a living document, but this comprehensive effort hasn't been undertaken by the city in several decades, and so, given where we are and where we're going, this general plan is really focusing on, it is the general plan 2040, so it is seeking to plan for growth through 2040.
Thank you. And to the extent that the general plan, you know, intersects with addressing housing, can you speak to how, you know, what the connection is between the housing element and the general plan?
So the housing element is a chapter within the general plan. However, it is unique in that it is subject to state oversight and state certification, whereas all other elements in the general plan are not and are subject to local discretion. But in the end of the day, it is a chapter of our general plan, and so all chapters should be consistent and appropriately support and interact with each other.
And the housing element is, you know, is an eight-year plan, correct? And so, we're looking at developing a general plan through 2040, which essentially encompasses two and a half-ish housing elements, is that right?
That is correct. Per state law, a housing element needs to be updated every eight years. The city's general plan is generally updated around every 20 years, but there are ample times throughout that period where it is amended and updated as needed, specifically to adapt to changing local conditions and/or state law.
Great. And then, I just want to make sure we're all, you know, on the same page with the same information, so I think it's worthwhile just kind of do a little bit of, you know, contextualizing for the purposes of this conversation. So, another question would, you know, just for those who are new to this conversation, understanding, you know, what does it mean? What is the regional housing allocation for this RENA cycle, this housing element cycle? How is that different from previous cycles? And how is this RENA cycle and housing element cycle really significantly different, just in terms of the state requirements and potential consequences and enforcement mechanisms?
So the regional housing needs allocation, or the RENA, is a larger housing production estimate. It starts with the state, and then allocations are handed down to the region, to individual regions of the state, who then in turn work and develop allocations for each city. The city of San Mateo's regional housing needs allocation between now and 2031 is 7,015 housing units. This is significantly higher than our, the cycle we just, cycle five, which we just finished up, and past cycles as well, so it does require a lot more effort to plan for and then ultimately facilitate the production of that number of housing units.
And our RENA cycle six, number of over 7,000 net new housing units, is around double our last RENA cycle, is that accurate?
That is correct.
And remind me again, what are the consequences for not having a certified housing element?
The most significant would be loss of local control. There is also loss of potential state grant funding and other funding sources. And then, as you've probably heard, the builder's remedy, which gives developers who provide proposed projects with, under certain parameters, the ability to move forward without meeting local zoning requirements.
So, right now, we are, you know, what phase of the housing element are we in? We just received a second letter from HCD.
That is correct. They did raise a number of issues that still need to be addressed within our housing elements, so we're currently reviewing that letter, and we'll be bringing that discussion back to council in the near future.
So at this point, the city of San Mateo does not have a certified housing element?
We have a locally adopted housing element.
Right. We have a locally adopted housing element. We do not have a certified housing element according to HCD.
That is correct.
And that also has opened up the possibility of potential builder's remedy projects, is that, is that true?
Well, the builder's remedy is a portion of the Housing Accountability Act that some developers might argue provides them with an opportunity to propose projects that don't comply with general plan and zoning regulations. However, that is premised upon this idea that the city does not have a housing element that's substantially compliant with state law. Cities adopted a housing element that the city has stated to HCD that it does comply with state law, so the city's position, I think, is different than what some developers might argue, so there's a difference in position there. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Partially. I think that, I think from the council and the public's perspective, in terms of, you know, our desire to, to, to design our, and support creation of a community and build space that reflect, that is reflective of our values, right? And reflective of us as a community, I, you know, I think that there is a strong desire to have, to continue to have local control. And so, the, you know, the potential of having, you know, builder's remedy projects that are not subject to any, any local regulations, right? Then, you know, is, is something I think of important to discuss. And so, you know, and potentially, if they were looking at, you know, a difference between what a city-adopted housing element is, how that is treated legally and the legal standing of a city-adopted housing element versus the state-certified housing element, and, you know, the potential of having to litigate this, this interpretation or difference, the potential cost of litigation, you know, is something I also think is worth, worth addressing.
I'll just say it's much more beneficial to have a certified housing element from, from HCD in terms of the presumption that it gives the city and in terms of the clear retention of local control. Through the mayor, excuse me, can I?
No, I'm almost done. Yeah, I'm getting there. So, I think, you know, and I think the other, the other important distinction that I hope we can bring to this conversation is, you know, is that the state is requiring the city to zone for growth, correct? There's a difference between planning for growth and zoning for growth, which is within the policy purview of the council and the city. However, the city itself is not a developer. Would you mind just kind of explaining what that difference means in terms of how, you know, what, what that means in terms of the power and authority that the city has?
I'm not sure I'm following. Are you? What was, what was the question there?
So, the, I think it's important for the public to understand what the difference is in terms of our scope and authority as, you know, as, you know, in terms of the council's purview of setting land use policy versus the, the role and function of developers. That the city, you know, has a very finite amount of city-owned land, right? We, in very strategic and precision, you know, approaches, have, have taken up and developed that land, right? But the vast majority of land in the city is not owned by the city. It's privately owned and therefore privately controlled. And so, you know, making an important distinction in terms of how the public understands what the role of the council is, what the difference is between seeing the city, I mean, many of the, you know, dozens of emails that we received today, there was, I think, a very, there was a lot of confusion about what the city's role is in development, right? That we ourselves are not developers.
Yes, the, the general plan, the land use map, starting there, and then with the policies contained in the housing element, the land use element, and other elements, set parameters, and that can include heights and densities that are allowable on any site around the city. And then that basically lays the framework. And so, for something like the housing element, this HCD is looking for sufficient zoned capacity on the sites we've identified where that 7,015 housing units could be achieved. And so, that similarly feeds into the growth estimates we have for the general plan where we're looking at the increases in specifically density that we're allowing with these updated land uses, and then how many units could be realized over the 20-year horizon. So, we're laying the policy framework that would then give property owners and developers the ability to move forward with actual projects.
Thank you. And then, my last question is, is what is the, you know, what is the benefit of having a broad inclusion, like, well, we know that there, that removal of High Two will, you know, from the EIR will delay its publication. So, there's the timing issue, right, in terms of that removal. But just in terms of the, you know, having flexibility and understand, and better understanding, what is, you know, what would you recommend or what is your, your, you know, your professional opinion in terms of why would, why would policymakers want to have a broader range of study in an EIR versus a narrower range?
Well, I think if, for an environmental impact report, you want it to be aligned with the project that is at hand. But if there's policy choices such as where the height and density threshold should be, yes, it would make sense for the EIR to study the more conservative of those scenarios to then give the council options. Because if it wasn't studied and, say, you then wanted to go higher, we would have to update the EIR, and obviously, that would delay the decision-making process.
And so, any update to an EIR? I mean, this is like the first time in maybe several generations that the city of San Mateo has done a comprehensive general plan update. And, and so, I think it's helpful to, to help put some, to put some metrics or measurements around, you know, the timing, the impact of timing, but also potentially the impact of cost. If we were to have to go back and do another EIR, what would that look like and how much would that cost?
I think it really varies on what type of changes you would be looking to make.
So, for example, like, what is the, you know, I believe that you had said that we have spent around $4 million in this general plan process. Is that still, is that still our working number?
Yeah, I would say on consultants and other third-party expenditures, yes.
Okay. So, so, $4 million, an estimated four years of community engagement, staff time. You know, in their last meeting, you said that this was, you know, you characterized this as a pretty intensive, staff-intensive initiative. Is that still true?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, we're looking at, you know, significant staff time. We're looking at, we're looking at significant potential costs to have to do an additional EIR, right? And also delays in the timeline. Is that, did I capture everything?
I think additional changes to the EIR or updates would really depend on what was being envisioned with those changes. So, some would take longer than others.
I appreciate you wanting to qualify your answers, but I think for the purposes of us taking, you know, looking at doing this once, right, considering that we've already invested four years, $4 million, we've contacted an estimated 5,000 community members in this process and still have numerous community input and community engagement efforts being planned, as well as, you know, technical reports, entire website. We've done multiple surveys, pop-up events. This is, you know, we're, we're years into this, this effort. And, and I think that there, you know, just as a matter of due diligence, it's, it seems important to, to do this, this right. So, Deputy Mayor Nosh, did you have any questions?
No, I was just suggesting that maybe we were getting into comment as opposed to questions, so we should finish up the other questions and go to public comment. But I, but you, you, you updated me on what you were saying, and I think we're done.
Would anyone else care to kick off with questions? Councilmember Hedges.
So, actually, you've answered some of my questions through the questions from the So, I'm curious about a couple of things, because in the maps, I had a little hard time, I would say, figuring the heights and limits north and east of the downtown train station. That would be like from the Van Dome Hotel and around Wisnoms. There were so many different little color patches. Could you enlighten me on that? Because the reason I'm asking this, that's a very historic part of San Mateo that I don't want to chop up.
I'm just trying to pull up this screen here.
So, I'm old enough to remember Mr. Roselli, who was a pensioner that lived in the Van Dome Hotel and volunteered at the library.
We'll jump back to the main land use map. So, one of the things you'll see, and actually, maybe the study area map is better, you can see, and I think the area you're referring to, kind of as you're getting into the north-central neighborhood, was outside of the downtown study area, and there was a lot of deliberation on that, and ultimately, it was decided to leave it out. And so, the growth and change there is, you have the corridor going up Third and Fourth toward 101, and then along San Mateo Drive and the Caltrain corridor. But you can see those, those two areas within that half-mile TOD area of downtown, as well as the downtown core itself, are really where the, the growth and change are envisioned.
So, when we're, we're talking about, let's take Delaware and First Street, what would be the height limits along there? Because that's next to the, very close to the Brown House.
I would need to look, I'm not sure, familiar with the specific land uses in that location. We are working on having a high-resolution map that is parcel-specific available, so when we do our, publish our draft general plan, we'll have resources available to where we can really drill down to the parcel level to understand where these land uses are at. But I can get back to you on that, but I don't have that answer right now.
The reason I'm asking is that I'm, it was very clear that I wanted some higher limits around the train stations, but I also don't want to impact those old neighborhoods.
There is, to some degree, that is part of the objective with the map as shown here, where you can see those high, those high mixed-use categories to the west and kind of to the southeast in there. But yeah, it does drop off in density if you're going kind of to the northeast a little bit more as you get into the neighborhood there. So, you'll have a quicker transition from the Caltrain station to more of your residential, neighborhood residential scale.
I just want to register my concerns for that, that particular area. And there's, I think it's First Street, across from First Street, there's a neighborhood that dead-ends at very old homes. They've been in San Mateo long before I got here, and probably long before most of the people in this room got here. That's one question. My understanding is, no matter what we're going to do in the EIR, we're going to do High One, High Two, the whole schmear of everything.
Yes, as noted in my presentation, at this point, because of the number of technical studies that have been completed, there would be a delay if we pulled High Two out of the evaluation. So, at this point, we are moving forward with the EIR evaluating a land use map that includes High Two.
And even though I showed a preference last time for High One, I did contact you and was concerned we were not going to, I figured out later, unfortunately, that we were not going to actually do a poll on High Two, based on what the consensus was last time, and I told you that I would prefer to do a poll on High One and High Two.
Yes, and that would be one of the areas that we're looking from direction from council this evening on.
Okay, good. I think that's all I have for questions now.
Thank you, Zach. Of course, we have a number of folks who weighed in recently on the specific areas you mentioned in your presentation on 25th Avenue by Hacienda and the church parking lot. And we, I appreciate staff's response and recommendations. Would it be safe to say that if council agreed tonight to make, allow staff to continue to make adjustments to other study areas consistent with council direction in a similar manner, that if we went ahead with something tonight, the draft general plan update, public outreach would allow for members of the public to take, you know, a deep look at areas in their neighborhood, for example? And if something similar to this was brought up during those, it could, you know, be taken into consideration by staff and changes could potentially be made at that time?
Absolutely. And that's, we did want to highlight that until there's a final adoption, all elements of the general plan are still draft, meaning there is the ability to make adjustments to them. And we do envision as part of the three-meeting series this fall with council, one will, they'll be dedicated to the land use element, but I think more particularly, two specific land use change requests. We've already got a number of property owners that have specific land use changes. There was a version of this when we selected the land use map preferred scenario last July. And so, we are keeping a running list of any time we receive a request where someone is looking for a specific land use designation that's not currently shown on the map, we'll bring all of those before council this fall. So, there'll be that opportunity, but obviously, moving forward and throughout the community engagement process, we'll be talking, talking to residents, and where there are concerns raised, we'll be keeping a tally of that, so we can bring that back and give council an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you. No further questions.
Just two quick questions, Zach. Looking at this slide, Slide 32, you're making two recommendations to adjust. Can you tell me, bullet point one, are we, are we increasing for both of these, or is one being increased and one being decreased? Meaning, the first one says adjust to mixed-use medium one, three to five stories. What is that currently? And vice versa, and then the next one says adjusting to residential low. What is that currently?
And so, when you say currently, as in the preferred land use scenario that was selected, or the current land use map and the current general plan?
The current land use map.
So, the current land use plan, both of these would represent an increase in development potential. Right now, on 25th Avenue, it is a neighborhood commercial, and then the church parking lot site is, is a single-family.
So, what would those current heights be for bullet point one and bullet point two?
They would both be 24 feet.
So, it's two stories?
Yeah, I mean, the, the church parking lot, it's actually, with the way we measure height, it's 24 and 32. So, in theory, you can fit three stories in that range, but generally two.
Okay. Then the other question was, you said that most of the EIR work is already done, and there would be cost if we removed the High Two from the EIR cost. But if we had decided that we didn't want to adopt High Two, there's no cost if we don't disregard the EIR that's been done, correct?
No, there isn't, because the EIR is going to evaluate a growth scenario based on the land use map. And so, right now, it's a little over 21,000 units over the next 20 years. If you adopted a land use map that lowered that growth projection to, say, 20,000 or 19,000 units, or some units lower, you are still fine to certify that environmental impact report, because it evaluated a more conservative scenario.
Right. So, if we moved forward at some point and said, we want to do a study on only High One and not include High Two, there actually is no additional cost, because we've done the EIR work either way, and that's not discounting that, right?
Yes, well, it wouldn't be so much as a study as a policy choice. At that point, you would be looking, factoring in various elements and determining what is the mix of land uses that should go onto this map. I mean, these are estimates, and so, what we're really looking for is, say, if you came back and said, we want to add another land use category that allows up to, say, 300 units an acre, that would be something where we'd need to amend the EIR, because that would, that could result in more growth than we've evaluated. But if you're evaluating a scenario where there's less growth, we would still be fine with moving forward with the EIR as drafted.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
I have the shortest arms and the longest distance to turn on the sound. So, what I'm hearing, then, is my concerns about the older homes in north central, is that even if we had High One or High Two around the downtown train station, that the zoning could, could be preeminent in protecting those neighborhoods?
Yes, or you could identify land use adjustments, if you, if you wanted to see a lower level of intensity there. But yes, the zoning within a land use designation doesn't need to be set at the max. You can, there is, there's usually multiple zoning designations that can, that can be designated within each land use category, so some may, may align more with the low end, some more at the high end.
And looking at the old Measure H years ago, I would see heights differing within the same block. So, what you're saying is that we could take a couple of blocks or three blocks and, and be more protective of their, their neighborhood status as a historic neighborhood?
Yeah, that could, that could definitely be covered, whether it's a policy or, or more, more specifically outlined.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask for clarification, because I know that we've talked a lot about wanting to see graduated transitions between intensity and, and single-family zoning. So, I wanted to better understand, you know, I know, I think that that was captured in the goals and, in our goal, our policy goals for the general plan. I also remember it in the housing element as well. And so, I just wanted to better understand, you know, as we refine the map and collect community input, what, you know, how is, how, you know, what additional community input processes will help refine our, our map further before it's ultimately finalized?
So, with regard to the land use map, I, I think there's any number of inputs, whether it's parcel-specific, neighborhood-specific, or certain overarching design principles, all of those can be factored into the final composition of the land use map. The land use element and the housing element are two different chapters, and to the degree we can, we avoid, we try to avoid redundancy. So, housing policy is really focused in the housing element, and then that larger policy with regard to development and growth, and the other element, other aspects outside of housing are covered within the land use element. But there's always going to be overlap, but for the most part, we try to focus on where the appropriate element is, and then put those policies there. So, the majority of our housing policies will be located within our housing element and not necessarily our land use element.
Okay, so if I'm, so if I put myself in a community, you know, community member's perspective, right, and I'm thinking about my surrounding neighborhood, right, and how, how the land use map is, is being conceived now, what, you know, where I feel like it should be tweaked around the edges, or completely overhauled, if that is, you know, their desire, at what point are, are we capturing that input?
Um, we...
Because I, like, I just want to, you know, I, while I am so grateful to have a room full of interested parties here, it's wonderful to have so much engagement in the community, you know, in this process. A lot of it was driven by, you know, some fear tactics and misinformation. And so, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, in terms of, you know, how do we make sure that the public's interest in, you know, in providing meaningful input that can be ultimately integrated into the plan is, is laid out clearly?
That outreach has been going on since the, the beginning of the general plan update process, but I think as the process evolves and we have more clear plans, and we are now moving toward a full draft document, I think it's, it's easier for the community to understand exactly where these pieces are coming together. There was a lot of meaningful input and engagement during the alternatives evaluation, when the basis for our land use map was selected, but that's going to continue through the draft general plan. And so, it continues on through today, as well as over the summer, when we have a draft general plan to go out to the community with. And then ultimately, that feedback will come back to Council when you take up the draft general plan this fall, and then that's where you'll use that information to, to guide the final direction you provide.
Christina, did you have anything to add?
I think that when we enhance and revise our graphics and get the updated visual aids, that that will also be helpful to helping the community envision what the changes will look like in their communities.
And remind me what the timeline is on, on getting the visualizations out to community?
That will be part of our outreach and engagement effort, once we publish the draft general plan, so that'll be this summer and into the fall.
Summer into fall. And so, how, so where does that, where does that, where does that sync with potentially doing the surveys?
I think we would be looking for direction from Council on when you wanted to do the surveys.
Right. What I'm asking is, if we're considering doing the surveys after the draft general plan, what is, are we, are we doing visualizations before, after? I just, for me, it would help, be helpful to better understand and delineate the timeline. Thank you.
So, this schedule can kind of give you an idea of where we are right now. We're still a couple of months away from getting the draft general plan published. So, a lot of this information isn't fully out there. There's a lot of information available on, on the general plan update website, but all together in one document, that will be available beginning of the summer. And so, what we're proposing is, if you, you chose that earlier survey window, that survey would take place during the summer, while we are out there engaging with the community.
With the visualizations?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think, you know, I, actually, I'm really glad we're talking about this, because I think that it's, you know, it's for, for a lot of people, helping that, you know, can't see in, in 3D, right, when it's on a key with four, four different shades of purple, then I, I think that the visualization tool is very important to the community input process. And so, you know, I think that is something important to factor in, in terms of having that community engagement and education done, done and completed before the survey. So, I'm glad that we're, you know, clarifying that timeline. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Now, we will open it up to public comment. Patrice, do you want to do a little bit of education about how we do public comment and our expectations for decorum?
Yes. I will, first of all, mention that we have decorum in the council chambers. This is an official council meeting. It is not a town hall or a community meeting. It's, it's an official city council meeting. It's very important that we can hear the business and the words that are being said, the advice being given by the city councils. So, we ask for you to not be providing, talking and providing comments, because it does distract from our ability to hear what's going on. We are also recording this, and it can pick up on the recording also. So, that's one thing. The other thing is, everybody is invited into this room with their opinion, and when you clap, or cheer, or jeer, it has a chilling effect on anyone else giving their opinion, because they might not feel comfortable doing that. And so, we practice respect in this chamber, where everybody has an opportunity to provide their opinion and to give their public testimony during the public comment period. So, we ask that you respect that, and no clapping, no cheering, no "woo-hoo", or anything like that, as we go through the process. So, thank you very much for understanding that and the importance of it. The other thing we have on our rules is, depending on the number of public comments we have, we have guidelines about the timing on that. So, if we have one to 10 speakers, we can handle three minutes each. 11 to 20 speakers, we have two minutes each. And if we have more than 21, we allow for one minute each. We do have a timer that is available up on the screen, that you can see the countdown happening. And so, at this point in time, I have 25 speakers. So, we take the in-person speakers first, and then I will move, and it's growing, I will move to the online speakers after that. So, our first...
Um, sorry, city clerk. We've had a request for a 10-minute break before we begin public comment period, so if we could do that...
Absolutely. So, let me just finish this. So, we, that's the process that we're going to do. We have three different timings. We'll take the in-person speakers first, and then we will go on to the remote speakers, and we will have, I'm asking anyone on the line remotely who wants to speak on this, to please raise your hand now. And when we come back from the break, we will call out who the very last speaker is and how many speakers are remote. If you have not turned in a public speaker slip to me yet, please do deliver that to me now. If you've changed your mind and don't want to speak, come get your speaker slip back. Both are fine. And so, that's what, that's, that's the process. If you have any questions, please leave me during the break.
And we'll, we'll return in 10 minutes at 9:30. We will begin public comment, and thank you for your patience, as we started a little later.
In what?
We started a little later than 9:30.
Eric, could I suggest that we may give people a little more time tonight in public comment?
Yes. How did we do in terms of the number?
Our rules, the agreed-upon council rules, which are subject to change at the vote of council, are one to 10 speakers, three minutes; 11 to 20 is two minutes; and 21-plus is one minute. We are currently at 35 speakers.
Yeah, I understand.
Are we ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to... Thank you, everyone, for turning in your yellow slips. I have got 13 speakers online right now. I'm going to... If you could please raise your hand if you intend to speak, we are going to call out who has raised and say who will be the last speaker. And we will take no more speakers. You have 10 more seconds to raise your hand if you're interested in speaking remotely. Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to call the in-person speakers first, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the first speaker and the next two names. I'm going to ask the first speaker to come up here and the next two names to line up over here against the wall so that we can move quickly up to the microphone here in front to address city council. And that moves pretty quickly. And just for the record, the remote speakers are going to be Jennifer Martinez, Pablo Quintanilla, C.S. Robbins, Jonathan New, Jeremy Levine, Chris Bressot, Kalen Wu, Michael, Michael Weinauer, telephone number ending in 055, Sean Laxson, Lori Watnuki, and Moises Vilada. So Moises will be our last speaker. So let's begin with the in-person, please. And the first speaker will be Kenne Bru, followed by Tom Lees, and then Nancy Schneider. Please go ahead and line up against this wall. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Forty-year resident, but also a member of the Sierra Club, and we sent you all a letter with our comments. I'm just going to highlight those. It's essential that you keep that HI-2 because that is your most powerful tool for meeting the two primary goals that people want. Goal number one is build more affordable housing, of which we're way behind and we've been unsuccessful in meeting. Goal number two is get more open space, parks, wider streets, land for bicycles to have safe places to go. That's going to require more open space. That is accomplished by more height. When you go from 130 units to 200 units, you're adding 50% more units, which also allows you to get a higher percentage of affordable units. You go from 15%, it can be studied, maybe 20. When you go from eight to 10 stories, that's a 25% increase in the allowable height. That's going to translate into open space. Please keep that in mind and keep the housing at two.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Lees, followed by Nancy Schneider, and then Carol Eldridge.
Hello again. Thank you for giving me the opportunities to speak. I urge you to retain the heights and densities that have already been included in the draft general plan update for the residential and mixed-use HI-2 categories, and consider heights up to 12 stories for residential heights, buildings in transit-rich areas of the city, including downtown El Camino Real and by the three Caltrain stations. Higher densities in areas close to current and future public transit will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing the need for longer distance, larger travel distance. In addition, taller heights and densities will allow for more open space on the same pieces of property. Given that the city has recently received its second review letter from HCD informing us the housing element is not compliant with state law, the city must revise the housing element and general plan to make sure housing can be built within the city. Finally, I want to quote Carol Eldridge, that every piece of land in San Mateo is precious and needs to be used efficiently to house people at all income levels, create economic opportunity, and protect our environment. Please make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ted McKinnon, followed by Carol Eldridge, and then Vikas Maturi.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and the council. Thanks for the opportunity. On March 27th, the State Housing and Community Development, or HCD, officially found San Mateo's housing element out of compliance, exposing the city to serious consequences. Achieving compliance will involve facing hard decisions about which there appears to be much denial. We need to come to terms with the reality that we don't have available site capacity under current zoning ordinances necessary to achieve compliance. We should resolve to allow greater heights and densities in targeted areas. Doing otherwise invites further loss of control over our own zoning. 63% of respondents in last year's survey favored height limits up to 12 stories in targeted areas. We should amend our draft general plan to include such a designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carol Eldridge, followed by Vikas Maturi, and then Darren Gamblin. I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. My name is Carol Eldridge, and I am speaking this evening as a member of One San Mateo. However, I am also a Realtor in this community, and over the years I have seen as housing costs in San Mateo, both home prices and rents, have gone up and up to levels that are frankly breathtaking. At the end of 2022, the median home price in San Mateo was $2 million. I believe that by limiting ourselves to eight stories, we are squandering an opportunity, especially in view of the True North survey. I think we are unnecessarily confining our ability to add valuable units to the affordable and market-rate housing supply. We are also confining our ability to push back against a problem that is driving renters into poverty and rendering virtually impossible homeownership for so many folks. So my desire tonight was to encourage you to keep the door open to greater heights, and I am glad to get the impression that you intend to include HI-2 in the EIR.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vikas Maturi, followed by Darren Gamblin, and then Tomaslove Varanis.
Hi, my name is Vikas Maturi, and I'm a renter in San Mateo. And I'm here today to express my strong support for the greater building heights and densities, and for the city council to take steps outlined by staff to study and implement these policies. Research from a wide range of respected policy institutes has made clear that greater heights and buildings, heights and densities, play an important role in helping to reduce housing costs. And this is extremely important to me and my community. Several of my neighbors have been displaced or are currently being displaced by the lack of affordable housing in San Mateo. I also want to emphasize that 63% of San Mateans support heights up to 12 stories. This means that the vast majority of voices, including those working-class families that are currently being displaced and do not have the bandwidth to attend city council meetings, may not be represented in these kinds of forums and in this room today. So I implore the city council to allow greater heights and densities to help our city achieve safe and secure housing for all, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Darren Gamblin, followed by Tomaslove Varanis, and then Steve Chanlis.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time and your service. I am one of the residents in the 25th Avenue area. I guess that would be one of the ill-informed residents, according to our mayor. I don't know if I'm ill-informed or not, and if I am, I think it may be a function of staff's lack of public outreach in our area regarding the planned zoning changes. I would say that, and also the lot on 25th Avenue, the church lot, is a particular concern. It seems like it has no reason being in that planning area. It's kind of barely adjacent to that area. It doesn't seem to have any connection to the transit-oriented development there. It's plopped down the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. I would suggest pulling it out completely. I commend staff on pulling it down from the crazy height limits that were initially proposed, but pulling that out completely and sending it through the normal process. That lot has many uses in the community, a farmer's market, parking for the church, parking for the 25th Avenue district. It seems that it warrants its own discussion and not in this forum.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tomaslove Varanis, followed by Steve Chanlis, and then Christina Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and neighbors. My name is Tomaslove Varanis. I live on 24th Avenue, directly across from the church parking lot, and I was one of the community members who sent feedback via email this afternoon regarding the proposed changes to allow for multifamily housing to be placed on that property. The original slide within the presentation we just saw stated that none of these studies had been done in single-residence areas. The parking lot on 25th Avenue is bordered on all four sides by single-residence homes. I'm aware of the multifamily residences that currently exist on the east side of 24th Avenue beyond Hacienda. Anecdotally, I do not believe that that part of 24th Avenue is actually wider than the part of 24th Avenue directly across from either 25th Avenue church parking lot or the 24th Avenue church parking lot. This would reduce the impact...
If you intend to speak, we are going to call out who has raised and say who will be the last speaker. And we will take no more speakers. You have 10 more seconds to raise your hand if you're interested in speaking remotely. Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to call the in-person speakers first. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the first speaker and the next two names. I'm going to ask the first speaker to come up here and the next two names to line up over here against the wall so that we can move quickly up to the microphone here in front to address City Council. And that moves pretty quickly. And just for the record, the remote speakers are going to be Jennifer Martinez, Pablo Quintanilla, C.S. Robbins, Jonathan New, Jeremy Levine, Chris Bressot, Kalin Wu, Michael, Michael Weinauer, telephone number ending in 055, Sean Laxson, Lori Watnuki, and Moises Vilada. So that Moises will be our last speaker. So let's begin with the in-person, please. And the first speaker will be Kenne Bru, followed by Tom Lees, and then Nancy Schneider. Please go ahead and line up against this wall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council, 40-year resident, but also a member of Sierra Club. And we sent you all a letter with our comments. I'm just going to highlight those. It's essential that you keep that HI-2 because that is your most powerful tool for meeting the two primary goals that people want. Goal number one is build more affordable housing, of which we're way behind and we've been unsuccessful in meeting. Goal number two is get more open space, parks, wider streets, land for bicycles to have safe places to go. That's going to require more open space. That is accomplished by more height. When you go from 130 units to 200 units, you're adding 50% more units, which also allows you to get a higher percentage of affordable units. You go from 15%, it can be studied, maybe 20. When you go from eight to 10 stories, that's a 25% increase in the allowable height. That's going to translate into open space. Please keep that in mind and keep the housing at two.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Lees, followed by Nancy Schneider, and then Ted McKinnon. Looks like Tom Lees is gone. Go ahead, Nancy Schneider, followed by Ted McKinnon, and then Carol Eldridge.
Hello again. Thank you for giving me the opportunities to speak. I urge you to retain the heights and densities that have already been included in the draft general plan update for the residential and mixed-use HI-2 categories and consider heights up to 12 stories for residential heights, buildings in transit-rich areas of the city, including downtown El Camino Real and by the three Caltrain stations. Higher densities in areas close to current and future public transit will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing the need for longer distance, larger travel distance. In addition, taller heights and densities will allow for more open space on the same pieces of property. Given that the city has recently received its second review letter from HCD informing us the housing element is not compliant with state law, the city must revise the housing element and general plan to make sure housing can be built within the city. Finally, I want to quote Carol Eldridge that every piece of land in San Mateo is precious and needs to be used efficiently to house people at all income levels, create economic opportunity, and protect our environment. Please make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ted McKinnon, followed by Carol Eldridge, and then Vikas Maturi.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and the council. Thanks for the opportunity. On March 27th, the State Housing and Community Development, or HCD, officially found San Mateo's housing element out of compliance, exposing the city to serious consequences. Achieving compliance will involve facing hard decisions about which there appears to be much denial. We need to come to terms with the reality that we don't have available site capacity under current zoning ordinances necessary to achieve compliance. We should resolve to allow greater heights and densities in targeted areas. Doing otherwise invites further loss of control over our own zoning. 63% of respondents in last year's survey favored height limits up to 12 stories in targeted areas. We should amend our draft general plan to include such a designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carol Eldridge, followed by Vikas Matui, and then Darren Gamblin. I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. My name is Carol Eldridge, and I'm speaking this evening as a member of One San Mateo. However, I'm also a Realtor in this community, and over the years I have seen as housing costs in San Mateo, both home prices and rents, have gone up and up to levels that are frankly breathtaking. At the end of 2022, the median home price in San Mateo was $2 million. I believe that by limiting ourselves to eight stories, we are squandering an opportunity, especially in view of the True North survey. I think we are unnecessarily confining our ability to add valuable units to the affordable and market-rate housing supply. We are also confining our ability to push back against a problem that is driving renters into poverty and rendering virtually impossible homeownership for so many folks. So my desire tonight was to encourage you to keep the door open to greater heights, and I am glad to get the impression that you intend to include HI-2 in the EIR.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vikas Matui, followed by Darren Gamblin, and then Tomas Love Varanis.
Hi, my name is Vikas Matui, and I'm a renter in San Mateo. And I'm here today to express my strong support for the greater building heights and densities, and for the City Council to take steps outlined by staff to study and implement these policies. Research from a wide range of respected policy institutes has made clear that greater heights and buildings, heights and densities, play an important role in helping to reduce housing costs. And this is extremely important to me and my community. Several of my neighbors have been displaced or are currently being displaced by the lack of affordable housing in San Mateo. I also want to emphasize that 63% of San Mateans support heights up to 12 stories. This means that the vast majority of voices, including those working-class families that are currently being displaced and do not have the bandwidth to attend City Council meetings, may not be represented in these kinds of forums and in this room today. So I implore the City Council to allow greater heights and densities to help our city achieve safe and secure housing for all, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Darren Gamblin, followed by Tomas Love Varanis, and then Steve Chanlis.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time and your service. I am one of the residents in the 25th Avenue area. I guess that would be one of the ill-informed residents, according to our mayor. I don't know if I'm ill-informed or not, and if I am, I think it, you know, may be a function of staff's, you know, lack of public outreach in our area regarding the planned zoning changes. I would say that, and also the lot on 25th Avenue, the church lot, is a particular concern. It seems like it has no reason being in that planning area. It's kind of barely adjacent to that area. It doesn't seem to have any connection to the transit-oriented development there. It's plopped down the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. I would suggest pulling it out completely. If, I commend staff on pulling it down from the crazy height limits that were initially proposed, but pulling that out completely and sending it through the normal process. That lot has many uses in the community, a farmer's market, parking for the church, parking for the 25th Avenue district. It seems that it warrants its own discussion and not in this forum.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tomas Love Varanis, followed by Steve Chanlis, and then Christina Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and neighbors. My name is Tomasov Varanish. I live on 24th Avenue, directly across from the church parking lot, and I was one of the community members who sent feedback via email this afternoon regarding the proposed changes to allow for multifamily housing to be placed on that property. The original slide within the presentation we just saw stated that none of these studies had been done in single-residence areas. The parking lot on 25th Avenue is bordered on all four sides by single-residence homes. I'm aware of the multifamily residences that currently exist on the east side of 24th Avenue beyond Hacienda. Anecdotally, I do not believe that that part of 24th Avenue is actually, it is actually wider than the part of 24th Avenue directly across from either 25th Avenue Church parking lot or the 24th Avenue Church parking lot. This would reduce the impact of those units on the single-residence homes in a way that would not, would occur more for our homes. Please heed the voices of the community in this matter and commit to not only, to only allowing the construction of single-family resident homes no higher than two stories on the 24th and 25th Avenue property of the church parking lot. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Steve Chanlis, followed by Christina Armstrong, and then Michael Reagan.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm a San Mateo resident near 25th Avenue. My concerns are about the general plan leadership. From a 10,000-foot view is my perspective. Two years ago, Measure R lost. It was a more aggressive development plan. The public voted it down. Measure Y won, not by much, but it won. And this is a democracy. It won. The plan that I see is not a Measure Y, I don't, what would even call it, a Measure Y recognized plan. It looks more to me like a Measure R plan. And you even say in your presentation that you have to go back and get approval to get that plan passed. So I have a real concern about the leadership that we have in our council regarding implementing Measure Y. And I see no plan, no alternative. Run some scenarios. Provide one that uses Measure Y limitations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christina Armstrong, followed by Michael Reagan, then Dan.
Evening, everyone. I think I'm, my husband and I are 25-year resident of San Mateo. We live over on 23rd. And I have to admit, I was a little, I was pretty excited about being engaged in this huge community discussion, but I was a little bit put off about the comment by the mayor about scare tactics. Because to be honest, the only thing that was given to us was a two-sided piece of very well-written paper that was exactly what we saw tonight. I also do want to know, as a 25-year resident, we had never heard of any of this, and no one on our block had heard any of this was going on. And we were really all surprised. We're smart people. We're homeowners of 25, 30 years. We are all professionals. Some of us are now retired. We're not easily scared. I think the way your comments were setting up, you were creating more FUD than we were seeing as being scare tactics. I think the 20, I think it's preposterous to turn the church into a high, we got single-story residences right across. You're going to have the shadows. In all fairness, what kind of care are you going to give to them when they're in shadow?
Thank you.
And you're taking away our community farmer's market and our church parking.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Reagan, followed by Dan Baccio, and then Lisa Malley.
Yes, I am the president of the Bearsford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association, and we support the March 6 decision to remove the HI-2 and also stay with the Measure Y that you had voted on. I was at the meeting on March 6th. I sat through it all. It was a much more elaborate presentation than you had tonight. You guys sat through it. You saw what was there. You voted for it. Most of the people that were talking, we had two minutes, were against the HI-2, and you guys know it, and you voted for it, and you're letting her change this whole thing around. I just was given this thing about this 25th Avenue. We would like to get on the agenda. You're not giving us enough time to discuss this, so please get us on this agenda for the Bearsford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association so we can talk to you in a more proper setting other than a one-minute presentation. Please don't just pass this tonight and give us the opportunity to get the place filled up, because I will fill this place up with the residents, I can assure you.
Thank you, Dan. Baccio?
Baccio.
Oh, Baccio, thank you. Lisa Malley, and then Mitch Spiegel.
Don't worry about it. Thank you. Hi, everyone. First off, I think everyone who has taken the time here to be here tonight has taken the moment to know what we're talking about. We're talking about zoning. Zoning voted on today is a building built tomorrow, so let's not even allude to that we're, people here are impassioned over nothing. My family and I moved to 25th Ave at the start of '22. We moved from the city to be back in our hometown. I am your target audience. On Friday, before I received a knock on my door, I was all for all of this stuff. But when I see how heavy-handed and bullish the plan is and how poorly it is communicated to people, I'm appalled and taken back. Instead of helping this, and I'm for taller buildings on 25th and around my area, but instead of supporting this initiative, I spent my free time this weekend knocking on 200 doors. It's ridiculous. You know, we need to build, have zoning and building plans that are additive to our community. 25th Avenue is a vibrant area you're trying to enhance and make other areas like. Don't steamroll it. It's a nuanced approach. You must come at it with the right attitude and look at it holistically and how the neighborhood works. Create more 25ths. Don't bulldoze this one.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Malley, followed by Mitch Spiegel, then Elizabeth Struble.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lisa Malley, and I'm in the 25th Avenue neighborhood. And I'm really happy to see the changes since Friday, that things have gotten a little less dense and intense. My biggest concern really is the public outreach. You know, the whole neighborhood and all the business owners knew nothing of the general plan or its impacts. It's even more disconcerting that we've spent $4 million in four years and people are still in the dark. So I also want to say that I have to disagree with Mayor Lee, that the residents are confused. We completely understand there's no specific project in place and that this is a land use issue. I feel we've been insulted, and we're not that stupid. The fire was not a scare tactic. It accurately reflected what was available on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitch Spiegel, followed by Elizabeth Struble, and then Gonzalo Ruiz.
Hi, council. Good to see you. Mitch, District 5. I want to talk today about missing middle housing. I want to propose to council that we consider increasing the density and height allotments for R3, R4, and mixed-use zoning areas and remove some of the obstacles to transitioning from residential to greater density. Redwood City has done a great job with this, and I urge us to look at the best parts of the general plan to remove these barriers. At the end of the day, the goal is to add affordable housing. 20 studio units in a 200-unit development doesn't do that. It doesn't solve the problem for the thousands of families struggling with affordable housing. Missing middle is needed, and public outreach is needed. I would really like to see us show not only the developments, but the max developments. If it's an eight-unit building, I want to see the 10 with the density, and I want people to be able to see that so they can engage with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elizabeth Struble, followed by Gonzalo Ruiz, and then Jose Vaz.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Struble. I am a schoolteacher, and I have three adult children, two of whom live at home with me. I understand the need for more affordable housing in San Mateo and other cities on the peninsula. In addition, I am also very familiar with the state mandate to provide more housing. That being said, I strongly advocate for the 25th Avenue area that consideration be given to keeping the 24-foot height that is currently there. The first Presbyterian parking lot is currently zero feet and provides parking for the neighborhood thanks to the generosity of that church. Two stories is already a significant jump in neighborhood height. Five-plus stories will take away community parking, community use, and considerably change the neighborhood. This is not minimizing change in residential areas, as was stated earlier in this meeting. I'm surprised to hear we've been involved in this process for four years. This weekend was also the first time I'd heard proposed five-plus-story buildings in our area of 25th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Gonzalo Ruiz, followed by Joe Vase, and then Ellis Burns.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I want to reiterate one point made by the mayor earlier, which is during the conversation about the leaf blowers, what are your values? Please consider that. And in your own words, please minimize changes to existing neighborhoods. Councilmember Hedges says, "Don't want to impact those old neighborhoods." So please take that into account on the first hand. And on the second hand, you have heard that there's some confusion going on with the community. And without getting emotional about it, please do consider those surveys and have a robust outreach. And their outreach should include what is impact on traffic, parking, utilities, enforcement. You talked about enforcement earlier. And as a matter of fact, I would like to invite, you had a very robust conversation before on the gas-powered leaf blowers, on incentives. Consider incentives for those businesses on 25th Avenue that are struggling. Please consider that as part of this study. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Vase, followed by Ellis Burns, and then Jordan Grimes.
Hi, it's Joe Vaz. I'm a 25-year resident of 25th Avenue. I've raised my family. I'm still raising my family there. I moved there specifically because of the unique character of that little neighborhood. I, 15 years ago, dealt with the city in a remodel. The city told me multiple times, you need to change your design to protect the character of the neighborhood. We have a plan for your neighborhood and its single-family homes. I was surprised by what I learned on Friday. I'm literally within a rock's throw of that parking lot. That parking lot serves a lot of needs in the community. The residents there is, there's already traffic impact, substantial traffic impact. I am not in favor of changing the zoning from a residential to a residential low. No, this is a single-family neighborhood. It needs to remain that. We've invested. It's where we've lived our lives.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ellis Burns, followed by Jordan Grimes, and then Anneke.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable City Council, Ellis Burns. What I realized tonight, a 30-year resident here in San Mateo, right off 25th on Haci Industry. Really what I'm here to say is that I just urge you to keep the HI-2, mixed-use residential in, and have that reviewed, and continue the environmental impact. I think there are some great opportunities in San Mateo. I think it was talked about, maybe that there would be certain areas that are targeted. I happen to work with a developer who has an area over on Bridge Point that potentially could yield somewhere, if they are able to get the high zoning, that the project could yield somewhere around 800 units, of which probably about approximately 150 units would be affordable housing. So I just wanted to cite that because it gives you an example of some idea about what could be done in certain areas of San Mateo. So, and I, we've also submitted a letter under Miramar Capital, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Anneke, who is our last speaker in person.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. I had a very eloquent thing written here, and I can't seem to pull it up, so I'm just going to do a little ad-libbing now. It was really disappointing, after schlepping to so many meetings over the last four and a half years, to see the intensities, the heights and densities cut in the meeting a couple weeks ago. I would urge the council to consider keeping HI-2 and HI-3, at least in the EIR, at least for study, and initiate a immediate community survey to really gauge how people feel. I think it's important that we really assess the community in its entirety and not just depend on the input of those of us who can schlep to a council meeting at 10:00 PM on a Monday night. That's it for me. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Anneke.
Hi, thanks for having me here. I have lived in the Bay Area for my whole life, in San Mateo, on 23rd Avenue. This is the first that I'm hearing about this. My parents are conservative. Conservatives get what they want a lot of the time. I think if you, if you want to change the neighborhood in a way that is going to include the community, you have to include the community. You have to be transparent. I've never heard of this. I've sat through a lot of surveys, like I'm a young person, like who wants to figure out like how to build community. And I've sat through a lot of like 20-minute, 30-minute like phone call surveys, specifically asking how I, as a San Mateo resident, want to see the future of San Mateo and how we build economically and also affordably and like, you know, keep our community members in mind while we're advancing. And I have not gotten one, like I've never heard of this. So you need to do a better job of like putting out what's going on, especially for people who are putting their effort into knowing what's going on and like answering these surveys. Like you got to let us know what's happening, is mine.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go to the online comments. And I apologize, I missed the first name. So our very first speaker is Valerie Armento. Valerie, please go ahead.
Thank you. To the extent some of the matters presented tonight are the same as those decided on March 6th, those questions are not properly before the council. Your operational guidelines state you use Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and according to Rosenberg's Rules of Order, after a vote is taken, the matter is deemed closed, subject only to reopening if a proper motion to reconsider is made and passed. Two special rules apply to the motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider must be made at the meeting where the item was first voted upon. A motion to reconsider made at a later time is untimely. There was no motion to reconsider at the March 6th meeting. The topic did not arise until five hours after the minutes of that meeting were approved on March 20th. Using the term clarification doesn't change the rules. A motion to reconsider may only be made by a member who voted with the majority on the original motion. The purpose of this rule is finality. If a member of the minority can make a motion to reconsider, then the item can be brought back to the body again and again and again, which defeats the purpose of finality. Does not appear this requirement was met.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jennifer Martinez.
Thank you for letting us comment on this tonight. I'm a resident of north-central neighborhood, and I am speaking in support of greater heights and densities in neighborhoods across the city. I appreciate the concerns that have been raised about existing neighborhoods, and I want to emphasize that this is a plan for our future and future generations. So many who serve our community and who will serve our community in the future either live in unaffordable conditions or travel long distances. This is because the city has blocked opportunities to protect tenants and build housing that would benefit people at a range of income levels, namely multifamily housing. Even in response to our housing element, HCD notes that we have failed to further fare housing because we are not including greater densities in neighborhoods across the city. So please take seriously that a majority of voices are not being heard tonight, and look forward to the survey that is being planned and the additional conversations as we take up this debate. And I strongly encourage you to pursue the changes in the general plan that will allow for greater heightened density so that we can adequately meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pablo Quintanilla.
Hi, good evening. I'm Pablo. I'm a homeowner in the Sunnybury area of San Mateo, and for years I've worked helping engineers and designers think about unintended consequences in products or features that can have, that can result on people. And so restricting land use height brings to mind at least two potential unintended consequences that I wanted to raise tonight. And first, you know, lower height limits restrict the number of dwellings we can build, as you know, and an unintended consequence is creating upward pressure on home prices. So doing the opposite, increasing height limits, can have an unintended benefit of lessening pressure on home prices. The second is that restricting land use height may decrease housing options for communities with fewer resources, and over time, this can create undue pressure on families and force them to leave the area altogether. So the unintended consequence of lower height restrictions might be a widening of the income divide, creating two San Mateos. So in brief, zoning and height and density limits should provide us more, not fewer, options to close the income divide. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan New.
Hi, my name is Jonathan New, and I'm a homeowner who lives just north of downtown. Always appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm strongly in favor of going beyond the eight stories to 12-plus stories and accommodate the HI- the High 2 category in the EIR. The True North Survey commissioned by the city found that 63% of those polled were open to as many as 12 stories. This is a demographically representative, statistically significant survey. Respondents indicated that keeping building heights low was among the least important when planning for future housing in the city. HCD's rejection letter mentioned Measure Y in two spots, and watering down the height limits is going to make it harder to achieve compliance and avoid lawsuits. I'd prefer my tax dollars not go towards paying fines. I don't really understand what we're so afraid of. San Mateo already has several apartments, especially those located near the library, that are 10 stories or more. Even the Ben Franklin Hotel is more than eight stories, and it's the banner image on the San Mateo Historical Society website. We clearly have precedent for going taller than eight stories, and it's totally fine. Let's take advantage of this opportunity to go higher. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chris Bresso.
Yes, thank you. First off, councils should focus on building housing within the laws we have. Don't keep looking for feedback until you get the answers you want, just to throw off kind of every reasonable limit. You know, after all, if you can't stick with Measure Y, why should any citizen think he'll stick to High 2? If you can't stick to Measure Y, how will you stick with these, quote, "targeted areas"? I mean, frankly, we're not even building within the limits we have. There's places like Station Green that are less than five stories, hundreds and hundreds of units. Build more like that. You know, frankly, tall buildings have no genuine advantages except for speculative developers and banks. Tall buildings have, have many, many negative impacts. I hear a lot about open space. Parks in the shadow of large buildings are always vacant. Just look at any big city. You know, the transition areas we're hearing about, they're going to have a huge impact on much more of San Mateo than just the few spots where a high building is being shown on some of these drawings. Secondly, I'd say these visuals are not effective.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Kaelin Wu.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Kaelin Wu, and I do not live on 25th Avenue. I'm actually a homeowner living across the street from the Hillsdale Shopping Center, commenting on behalf of myself because of the general plan and its impact on the mall. Many of you probably are aware of the redevelopment of the mall in the future. So since we're talking about height limit, my opinion is that this mall deserves a higher height, more than any other site in the city, and here's why. We are planning for 2040, not 1940. Millennials and Gen Z's are already struggling to find places to rent or buy here. As someone who bought a house by the mall, I can't think of a more ideal site for redevelopment than this site. Everything's a walk away. We shouldn't squander this opportunity, especially since our housing element has been rejected twice by the state. I also want to say that the real problem isn't density but car traffic, and the only way of growing the city without causing deadlock is walking, biking, buses, trains, and et cetera. So, to summarize, I think Measure Y is not the right solution, and we should push more and more heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael. Please go ahead, Michael.
Measure Y was passed by the voters. Why are three of the seven lane use intensity categories in violation of Measure Y? Who decided that that was acceptable? Was it the city council? Was it the mayor who directed the staff to re-study things that were already decided? And how is that democratic tenet allowed to be violated? There have been 43 public meetings and 23 community workshops quoted and two mailings, but one of the questions asked was, do we need to do more robust outreach? How much more robust do you need to do, and how much more money do you need to spend? Four years to create an eight-year plan and $4 million is ridiculous using a boatload of consultants. This is consistent with a government reputation of study and spend and study and spend rather than make a decision for which you might be accountable. And these high-end buildings are not homes. Look at the, look at, they look like prisons. See Ryan Towers on West Third as an example, and that is only eight stories high.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Winehauer.
Good evening, council members. Welcome to Groundhog Day. Mayor Lee, I'd like to thank you personally for providing us with more reasons and more fuel for the recall effort that is currently underway. Your lack of honesty and integrity is shocking. Have we not seen so many examples of it already? Where the, the way with which you brought this back about at the, literally, the midnight hour is shameful. After, just because you didn't get the answer you didn't want. So at least own that. You didn't get the answer you wanted, so you're coming back here to try to get the answer you wanted, and it's not right. We've spoken, the council voted, so I'm asking the rest of the council to demonstrate integrity and stick with the decisions you made and represent all San Mateos. Thank you.
The next speaker is a telephone number ending in 055. Telephone number ending in 055. Okay, I'll come back to you. Sean Laxton, if you could go ahead and speak now.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I asked the City Council to retain residential High 2 and mixed-use High 2 densities and to raise building heights to residential High 3 for up to 12 stories in downtown and around our Caltrain stations. I am a renter in San Mateo, and the current housing supply is dominated by single-family detached housing, which makes it impossible for me and folks like me to afford to buy a home in this city or possibly even keep up with rising rent prices. I want to remind everyone tonight that the city is currently not in compliance with the HCD, and by continuing to allow for low-density zoning by following Measure Y, City Council puts the city at risk of builder's remedy. Honestly, the, the comments, you know, that there are no benefits to tall buildings, just look at Chicago, where I grew up. It has high-density buildings and some of the highest park space per square mile in the country. There is no use in protecting the character of a neighborhood as low-density if the next generation cannot even afford to live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in 055, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Scott Amoroso. I'm a 45-year resident. I live in the Bearsford neighborhood. Taller buildings are not cheaper to build. They are not going to be more affordable. The housing that's being built, at most, is 10% affordable. Developers don't build buildings to make them affordable, they're, they're trying to make money. My wife and I made a major investment here 25 years ago because of the neighborhood. Changing the neighborhood now is, is not realistic or reasonable. Please don't turn this into San Francisco or San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Moises Viladi. Moises, please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll come back to you. We'll move on to Lori Watanuki.
Lori Watanuki, good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the City Council. Stay with the removal of High 2, residential and mixed use. I am very concerned about 12 stories being too tall with 200 units per acre. I agree with Councilman Hedges' concerns with older historic homes in north-central being impacted. And also, there is a historic district in the downtown. Measure Y has served San Francisco well for over three decades with inclusionary affordable housing. I do support the removal of H2 from the EIR and its importance survey the likelihood Those are my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeremy Levine. Jeremy, please go ahead.
Good evening, Council. The choices before you tonight are not final decisions. They are about creating options for the city in the future. This is not, the city may well need some of these options, because you're not just updating your general plan land use map right now, San Mateo is also updating its housing element. Just last week, San Mateo received a review letter from the state about your housing element indicating the city may need to make more changes in order to comply with state law and complete, complete a really good plan for housing. And so the city should be exploring the most options that it can in its EIR to make sure that it has choices. The way HLC sees it, the city can pursue rezoning above the Measure Y limit, make sure that it has really good opportunity sites, or you could rezone really broadly throughout the community up to the Measure Y limit. We think it's going to be a lot more, you know, less controversial, better fit for the community to, to really concentrate density where you're working with it. And so, yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moises Viladi, if you can try one more time to unmute yourself. Okay, he doesn't seem to be able to do that, and that is our last speaker.
Thank you so much. We will close public comment, and this is the time for council deliberation.
I'd like to clarify something.
Please do.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify something. This being on agenda night, I think, was generated by me, not by the mayor. And it's because of a misunderstanding that I had, I contacted Zach because I wanted to make sure that High 2 was not taken off of the EIR or the polling, even though I was for High 1, because I wanted to know how the community felt. So I believe that's the main reason we're reviewing this. Is that right, Zach?
We are seeking clarification, yes, on, on how, how they're.
So I wanted to clarify that. Number two, because I think it's important, Robert's Rules of Order, the speaker that called in was correct, that only at the meeting, somebody that voted against something can bring it up again. However, someone who vaded in favor of it at any time after the meeting, the original meeting, can ask for reconsideration. I've been down this road many times, and I know that's true. And people argue about Robert's Rules all the time, but this is stated very clearly in Robert's Rules. So since I was in favor of the motion, I had the right to bring it up again. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
So I want to thank everybody who came out tonight and those who gave comments, especially those who came from the 25th Avenue area. I, I did read the Nextdoor Post and the flyer, and of course, the many emails that we received. You know, I, I read and heard a lot. I heard, of course, frustration at not knowing about what was going on, not being given more outreach. This is the first time a lot of people in the room are hearing about what's going on. Concerns about what we're going to do with the parking in the area, of course, particularly at a parking lot, which is well-used. And, you know, I, I agreed with a number of things that were presented in the flyer. You know, I, I think that the, the medium-one density land use designation for the parking lot area was a bit high. And it, you know, so I, and I think, so I appreciated staff's response. And, you know, I, I do think it's important to be able to reconsider parts at the margins. The more I kept looking at the general plan 2030 plan and the earlier iterations of the land use, I, I felt like, indeed, you know, it, it wasn't enough of a drop-off, for sure. And of course, I went around the area and, so, you know, I, I agreed that there was a, you know, a legitimate concern brought forth, and, and I think we made some progress tonight, and I really appreciate staff's flexibility and the city manager and Christina and Zach talking through it and, and offering a proposal that I, I do think is aligned with council's overall goals with this plan and process. I also agree that I could have and should have done more to reach out to District 5 about what's going on. I honestly, as I mentioned to some folks in replies to some of your emails, and even in discussions at a recent Reimagine Hillsdale Open House, you know, part of, part of why I didn't make a big, specific effort personally to, to reach out about this particular item in March, which, just as a reminder, was the first general plan item since I was elected in November, is, is because the material that we were going over on March 6th was actually largely held over from a previous council meeting in July 2022. And there had been public workshops before that and after that on this material. So it felt more to me like a review with a new council than a big update for the public. But I think we've, we've gotten some feedback on that, and, and it seems that there's, you know, even though we've done a lot of outreach, a lot of outreach, we clearly haven't reached everybody, and, and there's more to be done there. So I, I will certainly be mindful of, of ways in which I can make sure that more people are learning about what we're doing and, and are, you know, joining us in, in the updates to come, because we definitely have some more work to do together. So thank you for, for reaching out, bringing your concerns, and, and helping make the process better tonight. That said, there, there was a bullet at, at the, at the bottom of one of the pages of the, of the flyer that, that I actually agree with almost completely. Supporting the growth of our community should involve preserving what we have while reinvesting in our local businesses, supporting small businesses, and prioritizing smart development of affordable housing. All, all of that part of that bullet, I, I agree with, and I feel like we're trying to accomplish with, with this plan. The, the bullet does continue to say this plan is not in accordance with any of those concepts. I, I respectfully disagree with that, and, and here's where I'm coming from. You know, I, I think we've, we've heard a lot in, in the presentation today, and so I hope some of you may, may have, you know, from what has been described, appreciate a little more of, of, of the context of, of what we're doing here. Let me just remind myself, you know, I think, because I, I made some comments last time to kind of sum it up. But, you know, as, as has been mentioned, I think what we found during this, these four-plus years of, of outreach and, and work and, and analysis, you know, community input and consultant and staff analysis, is that Measure Y, while it may have met the needs of San Mateo in the past, and even maybe today, it won't allow us to meet our anticipated state-mandated housing needs through 2040 and beyond. And that's what we're trying to, try to do here, is, is figure out how we can plan and prepare for sustainable growth for our city into 2040 and beyond. So, so that's why some of the land use designations, for example, don't necessarily, aren't compliant with Measure Y. We're, we're trying to work with the community to ask the question of, given what we found, how, how could we move forward? And, and so I'm, I'm, you know, as has been mentioned, the, the median home price in San Mateo right now is $2 million. I can't afford that. You know, I'm, I'm the only renter on the council. I grew up here. I can't, I can't own a home here right now. The, the, the home price over the last decade has nearly doubled. The home price over the last decade has nearly doubled, and rents have gone up about 60%. That's what we're dealing with. And the state is mandating that we find more housing units. So I'm hoping that we can continue to work together in this process to come up with a compromise. That's what we're asking here, is, you know, is there an opportunity to focus development in our transit areas, near our highways, so that we don't make changes to all of the single-family neighborhoods that we have? Now, you know, folks are concerned about this parking lot that's near and, you know, kind of on the same block as single-family homes. I hear those concerns. And indeed, that's why I feel like we're pushing for a land use map that looks the way it does. We've heard a lot of concerns about protecting single-family neighborhoods, and so this option is being considered as an alternative to, for example, upzoning the single-family neighborhoods. We have to come up with these numbers in some way, and I think we know, I think that that option is less interesting to a lot of people. So, but, we, you know, we're not necessarily going to be able to go without any change whatsoever, right? Some things are going to change. And one thing I thought about when I was looking at 25th, for example, especially that, you know, the shopping district, you know, one thing that occurred to me when I was looking at both of these particular units, is that, yes, definitely, you know, a five-story housing development seems out of step with what's around that area today, right? But we're talking about a future plan. So first of all, this is not necessarily going to come up tomorrow, right? And even though some things may come up at some, you know, in the near future, the broader land use map, we're talking about 20 years. You know, we're saying, within the next 20 years, how can we plan for some of this growth? So we're going to see things come up from time to time, and it's going to be a gradual change. It's hard when you look at the land use map all at once and go, wow, this is totally different. You know, this is not where I grew up. This is, this is out of step. But I think, you know, if it were a more gradual growth and change here and there, it wouldn't seem quite as disruptive. And indeed, if we built up some of the business district to have more uses, then it may not seem quite as out of step later if we had something of a similar size in that area. By the way, the church is interested in building housing there. So it's not as if we just made up an idea that, you know, it would be awesome if we had a tower there or something. The owners of the lot are considering building housing and are waiting for this process to shake out and haven't made any decisions yet. Another thing I think is interesting, important to consider there is that, most likely, especially if it's owned by the church, parking will be part of the development, right? We're not going to completely lose the parking lot and all parking with it. There will be some kind of development that takes into account the current needs and future needs. And that development, if it does happen, will come, you know, back before the council. There'll be a public meeting, and I'll make sure to knock on some doors to let people know when that's happening. So that's kind of, I just, I felt like that might be useful for me to mention and kind of get out of the way before I move on to the topics at hand. I think I'm going to attempt to answer the questions that were presented before us. Should residential High Two and mixed-use High Two be removed from consideration? My answer would be no. You know, we saw a slide earlier that showed where the High Ones and Twos are, thank you very much, and maybe it'll come back. But, you know, it's, they're all within the study areas that we're looking at as part of this general plan. So when this plan comes before the voters, if it comes before the voters in November 2024 as presented, you know, if it were to not pass, then those areas would be set to Measure Y. But those sites are some of the better opportunities for us to increase housing, meet arena numbers, while mitigating congestion and not building it exactly right next to you. So I think it's important, a number of commentators have mentioned other reasons. I think, I also do think that what resonated with me was a little bit of potentially unintended consequences, particularly as we're still going through our housing element process and as we received some direction in our last letter that indicated, you know, I think concern about Measure Y's potential role in restricting our ability to build housing in the future. If part of our interest in furthering this housing element is to say that, well, we're bringing a general plan to the voters that could have more housing opportunities, and yet we're shaving that plan before we even finish our housing element, it may not be as convincing an argument or claim to HCD. So for those reasons, I feel like we should not remove them from consideration, among others. Should a land use map with residential High Two and mixed-use High Two be studied in the environmental impact report? Yes, as staff noted, the process has already begun with High Two. It would be disruptive to remove it at this point. We can adopt a reduced-growth land use map, even if we reviewed something with it inside the EIR, so I think we should keep it. When should a statistically reliable survey be conducted? I think I'd like to defer to a broader council conversation on that at this time. Should the survey ask about community support for including residential High Two and mixed-use High Two, or should it test ballot language feasibility? I think that's kind of determined by number three, so maybe I'll defer to that as well. Except I will just note that, indeed, we had this community survey just last year, that I sort of feel confirmed that there was at least some support, and indeed, quite a bit of support potentially for these sorts of heights. Those are my comments for now. Thank you. Oh, sorry, the fifth question. Yes, I would support allowing the general plan team to make minor adjustments. I think that it's already helped with concerns that were brought forward to us tonight. And so my hope is that if, you know, in the draft general plan process that's coming forward in the next couple of months, we'll have an opportunity to work together to keep tweaking this. You know, if we find another area that's not exactly, you know, found to be kind of in accordance with the broader vision of what we're trying to achieve here, I think we've demonstrated, thanks to your efforts tonight, that there's an opportunity to make that right, or at least better. It is still going to be a compromise at the end of the day, but for those reasons, I would support that too. Thank you.
And just to clarify, did you agree with staff's recommendation to focus the survey on likely voters?
Ah, yes, yes, I would. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to provide comments? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Lorraine for doing the kind of public outreach we all need to be doing. So I appreciate that. I appreciate Mayor Lee's effort to set a common base of understanding about the general plan, because obviously, we need a lot more of that. So going, trying to be focused, because I thought we had reached agreement last time, but let me be very, very focused in answering these questions tonight. And number one, I'm going to take the second one first. Should a land use map with High Two and residential and mixed-use High Two be studied in the EIR? I think, given the fact that we started it last August, it would not make sense not to include the Two in the EIR. Maybe I missed it last time. I didn't hear that that technical work had already been done. So, but I think I am all for looking at all the possibilities, but with that, I also still very firmly believe that residential High Two and mixed-use High Two should not be part of the final plan. I think we can talk about it in the EIR, but when we come back afterwards, I will still be thinking that we should only have residential mixed-use High One as the tallest general levels. And I believe it's for the same reason, High Two is just too high to be implemented through the study areas, not to mention that it's an economic challenge. So many developers I've spoken with say, once you get up past seven stories, you really need to go past wood into concrete and steel, and even 12 stories isn't economically feasible for that. I also think that we need to be focused on, you know, what works across our city. But I do think that if there is a specific area or a specific building where there is a rationale as part of a whole plan, so it could be a building if we looked at all of Bridgepoint, or a building if we looked at all of Hillsdale, or something that is very specific and says, here's why we need this 10-story building in order to make the entire plan work, I would be willing to consider that. That, in my mind, is different than this entire area, we can do 10 stories. So I would be very open to looking to staff, to the community, to my fellow council members to say, where are those areas where we really can talk about something restrictive? Because just saying this whole area, although Deputy Director Dahl, I thank you very much for doing that one slide that showed where High One and High Two were. That was very helpful, I think. But within that, I saw too much that was potentially High Two for my support. So yes, go ahead with High Two and mixed-use High Two in the EIR, but I do not believe that High Two and mixed-use High Two should be part of the general plan. But we're going to come back and have that discussion again, once we do the EIR. I continue to believe that, you know, we have to have strong minimum residential ratios in those mixed-use buildings, not just talk about how tall they are, but the fact that we all agree, whatever side of the housing spectrum you're on, we all want more housing. And we need a minimum residential ratio in mixed-use that is very, very strong, and do everything we can to encourage two- and three-bedroom units, because we want people, whoever they are, to come to San Mateo, to stay in San Mateo. I love when people say, I've lived here for 30 years. I mean, I think that's great. You're invested in the community. But we need to provide the housing that allows for people to grow and stay. So I think that's very important. I think we also need to have objective design standards, and this is expanding on that, but that also helps us to ensure that we have sufficient open space, which lots of people talked about tonight, green open space, not just interior public courtyards. I mean, that will allow you to get outside of your apartment, but that's very different than being able to walk and have your kids play. So I think that's very important. And those objective design standards also have to talk about our historic assets and how we marry those historic elements with our new buildings. So I think that is worth still bringing up. I said, I wrote these out before the meeting because I wanted to make sure I was very specific and answered the questions. A lot of the discussion tonight has been about transitional neighborhoods. I think the fact that that's been brought up means we've made great progress in our general plan, because we've gone from big, 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 high level to what's going to happen on 25th, what's going to happen on Delaware and First. That's where it gets really difficult, and that's where we have to look neighborhood by neighborhood, area by area. I appreciate all the comments that the neighbors from 25th made. I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Hedges made about sort of the north-central area where there are historic homes. And I really would encourage neighbors to also say, here, we need to talk about this transitional area, and what should it be? Because many of the R3 and R4 areas can have transitional housing, but we need to get very specific, and I look forward to that in the coming months. So yes, absolutely, make minor adjustments to draft land use consistent with council direction, but we've got to have the community input to do that. Because what North Central wants to do is probably going to be very different than what 25th Avenue wants to do. And that's what's so great about San Mateo, that we have so many great neighborhoods. You know, I supported keeping office height limits, we're not even talking about that here, to five stories to a job that address the jobs housing imbalance, we all agree exists, but a majority of council members said, no, we should keep it at seven. Okay, that's compromise. That's when a majority of council rules. I would prefer five. The majority wants seven? Let's go forward with seven. But that's the way it's supposed to work. Also, then, if we get to the survey, and I will go forward, I actually believe still very strongly that the survey should be about ballot language and not a broad community survey. What we are talking about is, I think we all, at least on this council, agree that there will be parts of the general plan that we come up with at the end that do not comply with Measure Y. But also, most Measure Y supporters would say, the foundation of Measure Y is that if you want to change something, put it on the ballot. What we really want is to approve it. That's policy, right? That is part of our law. So I think we need to focus on the ballot language. I also think that any survey should be likely voters, because this is coming down to a policy issue on a ballot, and it's important to continue to get broad community input. But if we're going to do a survey, we really need to be very clear, because this is going to be a very complicated ballot measure. What do we want, and how, you know, how do we talk about it? And also, I believe, as a professional marketer and market researcher, you have to say, what am I going to do with the input that I get? And I think that's why, another reason why we have to focus on likely voters and how do we communicate. We know that there's a division of opinion on growth in San Mateo, so I really recommend we put all of our community outreach into getting out into the neighborhoods, getting into places all over the place. And I would welcome neighborhoods saying, I want to be a representative and tell my neighbors. And let's, all the things that Deputy Director Dahl and Director Horstberger are talking about in terms of enhanced renderings, 3D models, putting what we mean by an eight-story building surrounded by a neighborhood, let's put that all in so people can see what it feels like. Because I think most people are open to compromise and are open to change, but they don't want to feel as if someone's slipping something by them. Similarly, I think people who are very supportive of big change don't want to feel as if the city is just shutting everything down. So let's have the conversation. So I think basically, everyone wants to be treated with respect and given honest answers. I hope I have answered your questions here, and if I have not, please let me know.
So, in the lion's share of this city, Measure Y will be untouched if the proposal we come up with passes. I would encourage everyone to look at the March 6th City Council agenda. There are maps with the 10 study areas. Look at those. Blow them up around your neighborhoods and come with questions. So last time that we were here, I was very clear that I wanted High One in the 10 study areas, and I did say that... areas, and I did say that possibly on the east side of El Camino, around the Hillsdale train station, which would be a good place for it, that I would go with high two. And in saying that, I want to say that I don't think this is a one-off choice. I don't think we have to choose between high one and high two. I think we can have a mix. And I think there's some areas where high two might work. And so I'll say that I think high two would work not in a half a mile of the downtown train station, but within a quarter of a mile. Because when I walk downtown, I look around, and there's buildings that are as high or higher than high two, and I haven't heard a lot of complaint about those. In fact, most of them are pretty well designed. Some of them are quite old. And there's a very tall residential building with some offices on the ground floor, very near the train station. So I think within a quarter of a mile, high two would be okay. And I think on the east side of El Camino, around the Hillsdale train station, high two would be okay. Part of it's going to be the design. So I have changed my mind on one thing since the last meeting. I had stated that I didn't want office buildings any higher than seven stories, because I'm concerned about, well, let me back up for just a minute. One of the reasons we're getting these big pushes from the state to build more housing is because we've had so many jobs come here, and so our housing jobs balance is very off-kilter. So we have to get that aligned, and one of the ways is to dumb down the offices. So I would say that I'm going to change my mind here and say, five-story offices are enough. Because that's going to help us with our jobs housing balance. But on mixed use, I'm sticking with what I said before, and it's high one with a large number to be determined of housing. I would like to see 40% of housing there, with at least 20% of that 40% below market rate. We'll see what comes out, but that's what I would like to see. Everybody here may have a different opinion. So there was no 100% agreement on anything we did last time with the council. Many of the council members have different ideas, and I support their ideas as being valid for them. I think that high two, mixed use, and residential high two should be in the environmental impact report. In fact, that's what brought us to this meeting tonight, I think, was me wanting that and being unclear what we decided last time. And I think a survey should be done, and I think it should include high two, but not necessarily be in the ballot measure. Now, this is where it gets more difficult. Should the survey be conducted during the draft general plan outreach? Should high two, up to 10 stories, 200 units, be included in TUD areas of Bridgepoint? Already nine stories are allowed at Bridgepoint for housing. So I'm not sure that high two has to be there. I would prefer high one, like in other areas. But I'm going to digress here for a minute and say, because most of the people my age don't believe people will take transit. I am a transit user. I really enjoy it. Not everybody does. And where I live, because of the tall office buildings, we have one 13-story office building, several seven-story. We have the 251 bus that stops at my corner. Across from street from me, the FCX bus goes directly to the city. There are two shuttles that take me to Caltrain, and one shuttle that takes me to Millbury Bart Station. And if I wanted to walk a few blocks, I could get on the bus in front of the current fish market, and that would take me to the downtown train station or the Hillsdale train station. So when you have the kind of development where I live, transit options begin to increase. And people self-select for living close to transit. People that want a single-family house are not going to move close to transit, they're going to move single-family neighborhood. It's been my view, from taking Caltrain very many times to the city to commute for work, that I'm the oldest guy on the train, that I have a lot of young folks around me that are without cars. They live in the Sunnyvale Town Center, downtown San Jose, and they want to live without automobiles now. That's not to say what they'll do when they're 40, but we'll have a new group of young people come behind them that'll live in these apartments that will want to ride transit. So it's not one size fits all. Based on people's preferences, people will locate there if they're willing to use transit, especially when there's incentives to use transit. And with our transportation demand management program, there will be incentives. So, after draft general plan phrase, how Measure Y should be modified to align with the general planned update? It will be in the 10 study areas, is that correct? If we modify it? I want to make sure I'm clear on this.
Well, that's where we would look for direction from council on exactly what you want to see on that ballot initiative. Is it, and how you would do it within the 10 study areas?
Well, as I said now, I want what I just said. I'm willing to accept within a quarter of a mile of downtown train station, high two. I don't think there's a reason around the Hayward Park, because it's pretty well been developed out. There's one small piece on the other side of the west side of the train station that could be developed, but that's about it. And then the Hillsdale train station, what I said. Other than that, high one for mixed use and for housing, which could get us up to 10 stories, depending on how much housing's in each development and how much affordable housing there is. And quite frankly, I'm really worried about the builder's remedy. Already, one developer has made an indication they may come forward with a builder remedy program, and we're facing that. And we need to get our housing element in alignment, and we need to be able to satisfy out to 2040 what might be coming with RENA. So this is, again, not a one-size-fits-all. It's, there are a lot of things to consider here, and part of it is protecting the city from the builder's remedy, in my opinion. So that's what I have for right now. Do you need any more? Have I missed anything? I don't want to have a flashback after the meeting that I left something out.
With regard to the survey, the question being asked is, when should it be conducted? Is this during the draft general plan outreach phase and/or after the draft general plan phase in the lead-up to general plan adoption?
Well, if we were going to, I'll just put it this way, I think we have two options here. If we're going, if we're going to use the survey to change our view on the general plan, then it would have to be the prior. If we're going to use the general plan, or use the survey to see how people feel about what we have produced with the general plan, then it'll have to be after. And I would prefer before, but I think, as you were saying, it's more useful to do it after. Is that correct?
I think that's what we're looking for direction on, which way the council wants to go. I think both can have uses, depending on the questions that are asked.
I would rather do it before then, so I know what the community feels, before we put it on the ballot, not after. I mean, it kind of looks like a losing proposition to know how people feel after you do it.
I can interject here. I think something to consider is how the timing of a survey would impact the completion of a general plan update.
I agree.
And then that would also shape to what degree Measure Y would need to be amended, and then going before the voters. And if doing a survey in the middle of the general plan update would push that process forward so as to jeopardize the ability to put an amendment to Measure Y before the voters in 2024, that's something that, you know, the council will need to think long and hard about.
Okay, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
I think the city manager wants to try that.
So it seems like being earlier rather than later would not jeopardize the 2024 date. So advise me on that.
I think our city manager might provide some clarification on timeline.
I need clarification.
It's really complicated, and so it's important that everyone in the room understands.
So if, as of now, we have an EIR that's in process that considers residential high two and mixed use high two. We're in the stages of preparing the draft general plan. So if we want the draft general plan to be consistent with what we're studying in the EIR, then we would include residential high two and mixed use high two in the draft general plan. If there is a desire to, in conjunction with that, understand what the community thinks about those heights and those densities, we would want to do the surveying now on those heights and those densities, and understand what the community feedback was on that, because then that would inform the transition from the draft general plan to the final general plan. So as an example, if we surveyed, if we put residential high one and mixed, or residential high two, excuse me, and mixed use high two into the draft general plan and surveyed on it, and the survey results came back with support for those two heights and densities, then the council might be inclined at that point to finalize the general plan with residential high two and mixed use high two in the general plan. Conversely, if the surveying came back with the community not being in favor of those heights and densities, and perhaps being in favor of residential high one and mixed use high one, then the council might be inclined to finalize the general plan with lower heights and lower densities, per the community feedback. The next piece would be, once the draft general plan is finalized with whatever the heights and densities are, then the determination would be made, what is the ballot language going to look like? And what parts of the general plan will be going in front of the voters? So that's really the distinction in the surveying. And so if the council's interest is in putting forward a draft general plan with residential high two and mixed use high two, then the question is, do you want to survey on that before you finalize the general plan? And if those two things happen in parallel, meaning the draft general plan and the surveying, if those happen in parallel, then we should remain on track to get this on the ballot for 2024. But the timing is very important.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Staff's recommendation was that any survey should be to likely voters, correct?
That is correct.
As opposed to the broader community, which is what you're talking about?
Yeah, I was using that interchangeably. Our recommendation is, the folks that are going to be determining the fate of Measure Y on the ballot are likely voters. And so if we're going to survey, it would make the most sense, we believe, to survey the likely voters.
I think that's a really important distinction to make.
I think, just, I'm just going to go down these, because I'm getting tired. Should residential high two and mixed use high two be removed from consideration? I believe that what I said last month still holds true. I think that high one is already a compromise, but I think that high one is a compromise that can be met by, you know, by working with the Measure Y supporters. You know, 55 feet is what Measure Y puts forward. 75 feet with urban height density bonuses is allowable. That's seven stories. It's not a huge stretch to get to eight. So initially, I would say with this draft, I think we should continue to have residential high two removed from the general plan. Should we use, should a land use map for residential high two and mixed use high two be studied? It sounds like we've already done most of that work, so I would recommend that we continue forward with that. I also would say that when we survey, we should survey to see what type of support there is for residential high two, because, you know, we're going to come forward and potentially put this on the ballot. It'd be nice to see if we can actually pull enough support to make that an option, or if the public isn't going to stomach it. But I think that already, you know, high one is a compromise that I feel like most Measure Y people will get behind and not feel like we're fleecing them or we're changing after they've just passed a law two years ago. Should a statistically reliable survey be conducted? Yes, and I believe that we should be doing that with specifically likely voters. I think, you know, a lot of this comes to modeling. We want to make sure that people are seeing three-dimensional modeling of what these things look like in their neighborhoods. In regards to 25th Avenue, I don't see that question here anymore, but I know you were asking if we should be increasing the height limits for the First Presbyterian Church parking lot. I would suggest that initially, we maintain a two- or three-story height there, because that's more of a step down into, you know, what the neighborhood already has, and it's probably more stomachable by the neighbors. That said, you know, it all comes down to what ends up being decided by survey, obviously. I would suggest that we do the survey sooner. The sooner the better, because it's going to give us guidance as to whether there is any potential to, you know, to increase height limits or not. Otherwise, like I said, I think we have to stick with the law that we have in place, which is, you know, 55 feet plus urban density bonus, 20 feet, seven stories, which all kind of falls pretty much in high one. Support general plan, minor adjustments to draft. Yes, I think that, you know, perhaps making adjustments to the draft land map consistent with council direction is feasible. I would, however, obviously state that if Measure Y is not overturned and is still the law, we have to abide by the law. I also think that, you know, by removing it, but not, removing it from consideration for now, but also following through and asking the survey questions about the 10-story height, puts us in a better position, too, as we watch to see what happens with HCD certification. And, you know, it may come down to, we don't have a choice. So for this point in time, I would say we do our homework, but we also abide by the will of what people have voted in. Does that answer all your questions from my perspective? Thank you.
The mayor, could I offer something? I feel like what I've heard a bit from multiple council members is, you know, an interest in potentially going below high two and mixed use high two, considering more high one, but an interest in conducting a survey on that and getting the more input from likely voters as to what they would prefer. And as has been noted, we've already begun this EIR with high two, and it seems like I'm hearing a number of council members are okay, given that, to proceed with number two. I would just suggest that I think if your answers to number two and three are yes, then your answer to number one should also, should be no. And so I wanted to see if others agree on that.
I agree. That's, the framing of this question and the ordering of it is a little bit confusing, and it's remove from consideration for what, right? Because we're talking about the land, you know, the general plan land use map, we're talking about the EIR. It's, I just, I don't want us to end up with another point of confusion about any, anything, you know, any of the input that council has provided that doesn't totally square, because that's my reading as well, in terms of interpreting the bullet points. So I'm, I, so, Councilmember Newsom, do you mind revisiting your answer to bullet point number one?
Yeah, well, the way I'm interpreting it is, should it be removed from consideration for being put in the current draft of the general plan? And we're at the draft phase, we're not at a final stage. And the answer is that the law doesn't even permit us to put the high two in. It's not legal. So with that being said, I think it makes the most sense that we remove it from consideration, or we don't put it in the draft as of now, but that we move forward with doing the EIRs, which we've already pretty much completed, and we also survey people to see what the public stomach is for this. That's my read on it.
Can I interject again briefly? As far as the legality is concerned, I mean, what we're asking the council for is the direction on, you know, should high two be taken off the table as far as the project, the general plan update? Now, if the council wants to keep it as part of the general plan update, then that would require an amendment to Measure Y that would go before the voters. So this is a preliminary... So this is at a preliminary stage. The council does not have the authority to simply, you know, make that change to Measure Y now. It has to go back to the voters. So I just want to be clear where we are in the decision-making process.
And just to elaborate, any, any land use designation that is not Measure Y compliant, which includes HI-1, also needs to be voted on by, by the electorate. So, so, I'm sorry, that, so your answer didn't totally.
So, yeah, I mean, HI-1 goes up to eight stories, and seven is legal under Measure Y, because 55 is what Measure Y spells out, and state overrides Measure Y with the two-story urban density bonus up to 75 feet. So it's not a big stretch to go from seven to eight stories. And that's why I feel like we include HI-1 and we don't include HI-2 until we get feedback. I mean, all we're talking about here is a draft. We're not talking tonight about a final.
I guess I would support that in the sense.
I think that, I, I'm looking at our city manager, wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to, to jump in through the mayor. I, I think what council member Lorraine said is correct, and I apologize that the, the decision points are confusing tonight. It is important that we get this right. I, I did ask Zach to pull back up the slide with what is consistent with Measure Y and what is not consistent with Measure Y. So there's a number of things that are going to go in the draft general plan that are, that are, we acknowledge are inconsistent with Measure Y, and we know that they need, they would need to go onto the ballot and be approved by the voters. That in and of itself should not deter from putting it in the draft general plan, nor potentially in the final general plan, knowing that the final general plan, portions of it are going to need to go to the voters for approval. I, I believe what is important here is that the, what's in the draft general plan, I think, is very important along the lines of what's in the EIR. So Zach talked about in the EIR, you know, if you, if you study residential HI-2 and mixed-use HI-2, and then you decide that those are not palatable, and you want to draw them down to lower heights and lower densities, that can be done, because you've already studied the higher heights and the higher densities in the EIR. While it's not apples to apples, it is similar in terms of, I think it would be easier if the draft general plan is consistent with the EIR, and then if there's a determination after surveying to pull those heights and densities down based on likely voter input in a statistically valid survey, I think that would be an easier move than taking, than having an EIR that's inconsistent with the draft general plan, and then potentially moving the draft general plan to higher and denser later after you get community feedback. So I, I will go back, and I think how council member Lorraine framed the answers of, if you answer number two and number three, yes, your answer to number one really needs to be no. I, I do think that is, is how we would, it would be the best way to proceed this evening, if that's what council wants to do, is if, if we're going to survey and we're going to proceed with the EIR at residential HI-2 and mixed-use HI-2, keeping those two on the table for the draft general plan, I think, makes the most sense.
And I'll just add to, to that. What, what we're doing in, in taking a consistent EIR and draft general plan to the likely voters for, for statistically valid community input, in parallel with multiple opportunities for community input through the general plan process, as well as our own considerations and surveying discussions with, with constituents to help further refine these ideas and the map, right? That a commitment to get a, a broad view of what community will support or will not support can then be further refined as we talk about what makes sense in these transition areas, how do we address these boundaries of, you know, mixed-use commercial zones into residential neighborhoods, all of, you know, all of the concerns and considerations that have been addressed, the idea that council member Hedges had in terms of focusing, further focusing HI-2 in, in more transit adjacent, in closer proximity to, to high-quality Caltrain stations. All of those ideas can then be incorporated into, you know, into the final version. And then, then there's the opportunity to do a more precision-level poll to, to get input on the ballot. So, you know, what, you know, I've, I've now helped deliver on two ballot measures that were very successful alongside council member Hedges, who I think is at number five or six. And, and, and I'll tell you, you know, what works is having as much information as possible. And so for everyone, you know, who, who has stayed along in this process, who's new to this process, you know, your input is so critical. And, you know, clearly, we have a lot of work to do to keep engaging people and bringing new people into the work. A lot of times, what we're hearing from are the same folks, right? And so how, you know, the silver lining of all of this is that we had, you know, dozens of new people who are saying, I'm hearing about this for the first time. And, and it's, it's really, you know, it's important that, that we continue to do that, hopefully, you know, in a less like urgent, alarming way, more in a, these are great opportunities to get input and, and make informed decisions and, you know, and, and know that your input and your opinion matters and that, you know, will be incorporated. So, um, so I, you know, I just, I guess, because I have the microphone, I might as well continue.
So I, may I intercede for a moment?
Okay, sure.
So I guess what it comes down to simply to me is that I wanted to include them in the draft general plan, because we're doing the EIR on them, and if it doesn't work out in the draft general plan, I want to chuck HI-2. So I actually think HI-1 is the only thing that will, will, will be acceptable to people in San Mateo, but I don't know that for sure.
But that's where you talk in a survey, as opposed to putting it in the draft general plan. As I understand it, a draft, general plan's supposed to be an easily implementable plan. And if we, our discussion earlier was that, okay, let's look at HI-2 and mixed-use HI-2 in the EIR, so that we have all the ideas in front of us. But three out of five of us last time said, we believe that residential HI-1 and mixed-use HI-1 was what was appropriate for San Mateo. It doesn't mean that we should, I'm all forgetting information, but we could just as easily, in my opinion, as I said earlier, there might be occasional exceptions where a HI-2 building would make sense. That, that doesn't mean that the, everywhere in the general plan should be HI-2. So if we're, I still believe that we should do the EIR and include HI-2, but that in terms of talking about the draft general plan, it should be HI-1 and mixed-use HI-1, and then we can add back in. And it might be a little more work, but it's, you know, it's where I believe the majority of San Mateo is going to be, and we need to understand, you gave us some indication as to what might be the impact of units tonight if we took out HI-2. That's important to note. That's important for people in the community to know. But I guess I, I respectfully disagree that we should be putting HI-2 and residential HI-2 in, in the general plan, just to make it easier to match with the EIR.
Did you want to clarify anything? Okay.
I think he's been very clear.
I think that I've been pretty clear. I, I mean, I think, you know, and Lisa did probably a better job of recapping what I was saying, but I, I think that there's nothing that precludes us from going back and putting HI-2 in to the general plan draft if we get the feedback in the EIR showing that there's support for it. I mean, I, I just don't think we need to draft something that, that isn't, you know, isn't stomached by the public. We, we want to find out that, that the likely voters of San Mateo who are surveyed are going to be okay with it, and that we have a shot at passing the measure. And, you know, Rich was telling me earlier that, you know, when he, I think it was the FEMA survey, you know, he only got about thirty, was it 30%? 30% support, and he still managed to pass it. So that doesn't even mean that I don't, we don't come back and still put HI-2 on the general plan. What I'm saying is, at this point in time, I don't think we should. I think we should stick to doing our research, doing our homework, and find out what the, what the, what the city stomachs. Thanks.
So I have one more question. So somewhere along the line, I remember telling, I think we were told, that if we don't put HI-2 in the, in the environmental impact survey and in the general, and then the draft general plan, that if we have to go back and put it in, that it's gonna, it's gonna throw us off of the, the date of 2024. Is that not correct? And that's the prime time to put this on the ballot.
If we, if we take it out of the EIR, putting it, putting it back in would, would very much jeopardize November 2024. If we, if we take the approach of not putting it in the draft general plan, doing the survey, and then potentially putting it back in, I don't think that, that threatens the timeline for the final. I, I think, you know, that's up to, up to council. So it's two, two different things, right? If we, if we take it out of the EIR and then want to put it back in, we're going to have a problem with the timeline.
Yeah, but not with the.
But if we don't put it in the draft, do the community survey, and then put it back in, there won't be a timing problem with the ballot measure. I think my city manager's opinion is, it's, it's easier to move down than it is to move up. That's my opinion, in terms of the heights and densities.
Through the mayor?
Yeah, well, I just, I, I hope that we can all agree that we are unanimous, that we want to keep on track with our timeline and, and move forward with the EIR, which includes all of these options. Is that, are we 100, so, okay, five out of five. Okay, so that's not on the table, just to eliminate that possibility. Okay. Did you want to say something?
So, so if it's easier to go down than it is back up, then I would have to stay with having it in the draft general plan, because I don't want to throw us, anything throw us off the timing for 2024. If it doesn't throw us off the timing, I don't care how we do it.
But you said.
Whether we move it up or move it down.
You said it did not, it would probably not throw the timing off.
I want to hear that it won't. I don't want to hear it probably won't.
Well, I think, can I just reframe that question a little bit? Because I think that it's, I think it would be really helpful for us, you know, because this, what we want to do is set up this process for success, right? We don't want community to feel duped, right? We don't want to, we don't want to tee up decision points that won't be supported by the community. Ultimately, it's the voters that make this decision. So what we're trying to do is work with, you know, the best possible information to understand what these trade-offs are in terms of timing, and what is in scope, why coupling it makes sense or might not make sense. So if you can elaborate, that would be helpful.
I would also just add to, just to the idea of keeping it in and sort of providing for worst-case scenario, or most conservative scenario, however you want to think about it, makes sense, is because when you take things away, you've already shown to the community what that largest outcome might look like, and so when you take it away, whether you're talking about it in the EIR or in the draft, you're talking about showing something smaller when you take things away. And so when, if you're polling and you find out that people are okay with the bigger number, but we, you've moved forward with the draft for the lower, then you have to figure out where you can put those higher things back in. And when you're talking about something theoretical versus something real, then you have to decide where to put it back in. And what people were okay with theoretically, when they start to see again in real life, it might be a little bit different. And so I would start to get concerned then what that could do to the schedule, because it might prolong the conversation more than you think. And so my opinion would be that it might be easier and less of a concern for the overall timeline to account for that worst case or more conservative scenario, to go with the outside number and retract back.
So people, I think, would feel like we were listening to them if, if it polled poorly and we, and we pulled it out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think I'm going to go with having it in. I mean, I was, if it could easily be removed or easily be added, I'm a little nervous with the answer I got. Throwing us off the timeline would probably be okay, because 2024 is when the most voters come out, the presidential election. And quite frankly, even though the most important election in anybody's life is their local city election, because they're responsible for about 80% of their needs versus the national election, still people focus on the national election. So that's what gets them out. So I think that, that if, I think that we put it in the draft general plan, if it's easier and we can pull it out, because I'm, and I'm speaking, because I'm for HI-1. So I'm speaking as a HI-1 person, but I want to know the answer to HI-2. So that's where I'm at.
Council member Newsom, have you moved on this?
I, I'm really conflicted. I mean, I just feel like, you know, going and saying I'm okay with HI-2 is disingenuous to the people who've voted for Measure Y. And even though it only won by a slim majority, it's still won. So for that reason, I, I'm, I'm kind of standing my ground with, I'm okay with HI-2 being removed from the draft. I, I think, just straw polling it, I think we still have a 3-2 on the first one anyways. I think we have a 5-all on the second one. I think we have a 5-all on every other one. So I don't know that we need to keep talking about it. And I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but it's, it, am I, am I wrong, or?
Oh, no, I just thought you wanted to speak.
No, that, that was just my thoughts. Thanks.
Well, I actually hear what you're saying, but I don't feel as being disrespectful, because I'm clearly for HI-1. But I want to know what people feel like, and I want to make sure we're laser fixed on that date for 2024, because it makes no sense to hold it off another year when people are less likely to vote. Because we want a strong vote on this, we want to hear everybody. So that's why, when I got a solid, yeah, we can pull it out and not affect the timeline, but probably won't affect it if we have to put it back in, that's when I decided to go ahead and put it in the general.
Yeah, I understand. And at the core, I'm in agreement with the wanting it the 24 timeline, so.
Okay.
Okay, and council member.
Really quickly, if I can, I'll try my best. I, I just feel like it needs to be said, ladies and gentlemen, we've literally spent four and a half years on this. We've, it's led us to this, right? We've, we conducted a survey last year that confirmed a majority of people were okay with these heights in the community. The, the 40 public meetings and 20-plus workshops got us to a land use map that you see before you, and last year's council was generally aligned with it, based mainly, I feel, on a sense that the public was aligned with this. So to me, of course, it would be easier to keep it in. So to me, of course, it would be easier to keep it in. This is what we've been working on. Making changes to what is currently before us will, of course, complicate the process. That doesn't mean we should never make changes. I think we had an example tonight in which something that made more sense improved the process. We have more opportunities to do that. But realistically, you know, I feel a lot of a case has been made to show that there is support for HI-2. And if, if some council members feel that we ought to conduct another survey on that to be extra sure, then I am in favor of that. But that is really what we're asking here.
There's a big difference, though, between a survey of likely voters and a general community survey. And I think that's an important decision, and I think that's what we're going to do, is talk to likely voters. We also didn't just, I'm thinking you went back, councilmember Hedges, and you made a comment about office levels.
That, that those are, so for the decision points in terms of what's in front of us right now, I think I hear a majority of council on bullet point number one saying no. So that bullet point number two is, is yes unanimously. Bullet point three, yes unanimously focused on likely voters. Okay? When, when should the survey be conducted? I heard, I think, a majority of, of council desiring the, the community survey to go out earlier, right? And also, an additional opportunity if needed, right? Which we can revisit at a later date, depending on, you know, the outcome of community input and the outcome of the survey, for potentially a, a ballot poll. Yes? Five? Do I have five on that?
I would say we absolutely need to do some polling on the ballot language, because this is going to be a very complicated ballot measure.
What we saw tonight with the 25th Avenue, when people become aware in their neighborhood of what might happen, that changes attitudes. You know, there was a survey done, and I can't remember who did it, it wasn't done by the city, of whether people would accept housing. And it was a high 60s that people were in favor of more housing. But the second question was, would you accept housing within a half a mile of your neighborhood? And the polling went down to 41%. So, so, you know, when people, people become more and more aware as we get closer to the ballot, that's why I want to know another survey, because people are obviously becoming more and more aware.
So I, so I hear unanimous support for a community survey for an additional ballot poll, correct? Both of which would, which would target likely voters.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing, and you did say this, but you didn't just say it in your recap, is that I would want the survey to be of likely voters.
Yeah.
I mean, just a public survey, it doesn't really serve a purpose. It should be of likely voters.
Yes.
But I think you said it, I just wanted to...
I did, and I will say it again in a third time, of likely voters. Okay. Everyone is in agreement. And then lastly, I think I also heard at least a majority, if not unanimous, support for the general plan team to make minor adjustments to the draft land use map consistent with council direction. Yes? Point in case the 25th Avenue community input. And, yes, and the transitions in North Central, and potentially future consideration for commercial height caps or, or, or some of the other ideas that councilmember Hedges suggested, like more precision-based HI-2 within the .25 mile radius to Caltrain. Did we, did we get there? Are we, are we clear?
Did you want to make a recommendation on that office HI cap? I mean, if you want to provide staff with direction on that and there's majority support, that would be useful to know now.
I don't, I don't believe that we want to make any recommendation on that. We want to move forward with the EIR and the land use map that is consistent, and any future refinements will be considered.
He wasn't talking about mixed use HI, he was talking about just the office HI.
For, for the office HI, right now, the land use map will identify it as allowing up to seven stories. If you want to reduce the stories to five, and there's majority support for that, that helps us move forward if we know that now.
I would be for five.
I would as well.
I think that is very, very clearly begins to help our jobs housing balance over, over time.
Okay. Are we, are, are we there? Did we get everything?
That, that is the input on the, on the questions up there tonight, so yes, that gives us what we need.
Thank you very much, and we really look forward to hearing what the outreach is going to be like, as I'm sure you do too.
We are going to get working on that. We've got lots of input to factor in.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, so we, we are not quite done. We, this is where we open up the opportunity for our council to provide any reports and announcements. Does anyone have a reports or announcements they'd like to share?
I would like to have a report from the city manager on the office vacancies in San Mateo. I'm hearing a lot of stuff thrown around, and if we can get those numbers, I would like to have them.
I don't, I don't have those numbers.
Do we know where we can get them? I asked Sam Carr today, and they couldn't give me two.
We will look into it and see what we can find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it's important, because... I think it's important, because I hear people saying they're, and, and I think it's important to development, to know what the office rate is. People are saying, just convert it to housing. Well, I'm seeing large numbers of buildings here converted to biotech and evicting people, and they're going to other office buildings.
Yes.
I wanted to propose, make a proposal to the council, because as has been noted by many council members and some members of the public, the city has received its second letter from HCD last week. Staff will be bringing forth an item to consider next steps soon. And I believe that our planning commission will be an important resource, working with us together to find the best next steps so that we can get certified as soon as possible. So I wanted to propose that planning commission potentially join us for the meeting to determine next steps. I don't know all the rules about joint sessions, but I, I wanted to throw it out there.
Briefly, it would have to be noticed as a joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council.
I support that idea.
I would suggest we, we phase it, because part of the value of having a planning commission is they get to discuss amongst themselves and make a recommendation. And then we get to benefit from hearing that recommendation. If we do it together, then that's, that step is cut off. So I think it would be better to phase it as we normally do.
Through the mayor, can I ask a clarifying question? By, by phasing, are you suggesting that we take it to the planning commission and then to the city council?
Maybe that was the wrong word. I think whatever we typically would do, I think having a joint meeting is not typical.
Yeah, so staff's plan is to come back to council on the 17th with this. Obviously, timing is, is of the essence. We're looking to go over the results of, of the latest and, and get council direction on kind of where we should go with our response to HCD, and then get it back to them as quickly as possible. You know, obviously, the clock is ticking with not having, we have been a self-approved housing element, but it's not certified, as has been noted. So I would, I would not advise, you know, whether we do a joint meeting or not is, is up to council, but I wouldn't advise delaying the council meeting past the 17th.
Absolutely.
I would agree completely. And, and I would also just agree with Deputy Mayor Nash, that I think in, in most cases, it would be proper and better to, to have a phased approach, and perhaps bring it before planning, before coming to council. But with time being of the essence, I, I think that's why I wanted to, to propose it in a joint session instead. I just feel that, I, I, I would like to think that we could do it in a way that would not confuse who's on city council and who's on the planning commission, for example. But I think we could get input from a number of people who have put thousands of hours into learning this process, and frankly, who, who, you know, some of, who had some comments related to our last draft that I think appear in our letter from HCD. So I, I just want to make sure we are valuing their continued effort to help us get toward a certified housing element as soon as possible.
I agree that I think it could be a fruitful and productive approach, especially considering the, the level of input that, and the significant investment that has been made from the planning commission in this effort, and, and then the tight turnaround. So, and also, I think that there's, you know, the fact is, is that they're a lot closer to, to it than we are in the details. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of, I think, sort of, learning and clarification that can happen just on the spot in those kind of, in those joint conversations. And, and when I was, gosh, was I on the plane? I was on, when did we do a joint session? We did, we have done joint sessions with this, with the subcommittee, right? The general plan subcommittee and the council. So it's, it, there's precedent for this, like, we've, we've definitely done this.
We've, we've done a, a joint session with the planning commission, I think it was late 2021.
Okay.
What would be asked of council at this meeting? Council would be asked, what would be asked of council at this meeting?
Direction on our response to, to HCD.
And...
So, so, sorry, let me just give a little bit more information. So we have submitted our second round to HCD, and they've submitted their comments back to us. And so we have a series of comments that we need to address. Ideally, we address those comments to their satisfaction, and then we get, and we get a certified housing element. So what the purpose of coming to council is, is to provide our input on the things we may need to do, and get council's input on the things they think we need to do to provide that response to HCD that will get us a certified housing element.
And if there is a divergence of opinion, if we hold a joint session?
I'll, I'll let the city attorney take that one.
We would take direction from the city council.
So I think ultimately, sorry, that planning commission would remain as advisory, and council would make the decisions.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I think Deputy Mayor Nash wants to make sure that they remain advisors, and that the council still has the ultimate decision-making power.
Of which I am totally aligned.
So there's a question on the table. Would anyone else like to respond? Okay, nobody can hear you. So, so this is, this is an item that's coming to council, scheduled to come to council on the 17th. It's not going to planning commission first. So they, so it's, they will not be deliberating.
I don't know, I just think that, especially if they haven't seen it before it comes to us, I'm good with the council just doing it.
So I'll, I'll just mention that I, I had a conversation with a planning commissioner about the letter over the weekend, and, you know, I, I asked questions of this planning commissioner, you know, because this planning commissioner is able to quote pieces from HCD letters that were sent to other cities that have passed, letters that were sent to other cities that have not passed. It was clear to me that this person has conducted an extensive amount of research, admittedly, a good deal more than I have, and that I'm going to be able to do between now and the 17th. So I, this comes out of an interest of having additional members in our city who have put in tons of work to provide a little more advice to the council at, at, at an important time, when I feel like we could use everything we, we can get.
I've talked to that same planning commissioner, I know who you mean, and that planning commissioner is very well-versed.
Can I just add one other thing? This isn't legal advice per se, but, you know, there is a, a staff team that's working on the housing element. We have a consultant working on the housing element, who's very familiar with what HCD is communicating with other jurisdictions. So there is a, a staff capacity to provide advice in that regard. Ultimately, it's up to the council to decide if you want to have that joint meeting or not, to provide input on how the city should be responding to this letter, understanding there's more process that's going to be involved. But still, I mean, staff has that capability as well, just for what it's worth.
Okay, I think we can move on. So does anyone else have any additional?
Sure, I would, excuse me, I would just like to say that I was with the San Mateo Public Library Foundation this week, and they are doing, instead of their annual big event, they're going to do a San Mateo Celebrates Week, the 23rd to 29th of April, and there will be events all over the city, at the library, at the farmer's market, at, I believe, King's Center, at Central Park, really trying to get the community involved in the library and, and all the joys there. So I would hope that we could do everything possible to promote that, because it's coming up, it's National Library Week, and that all of us make an effort to attend as many events as we can.
Which brings up another question. I think you sent us an email, Patrice, about writing a story about what libraries mean to us. Somebody sent it to us.
I think the library sent that to you.
Yeah, so I, I thought it came through your, I think you forwarded it to us. Is that still, I haven't done it yet, I want to do it. Is it, is it still timely?
I believe so. I, I believe that end of last week, we were forwarding your pictures and so on to them, so they were ready to go.
Okay, so should I send it to you and have you forward it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So tonight, I'm, I'm sorry to say that we will be adjourning in memory of two very tragic events. On Wednesday, March 29th, we tragically lost nine members of the 101st Airborne Division of the US Army in a devastating crash involving two Army... the 101st Airborne Division of the U.S. Army in a devastating crash involving two Army Black Hawk medical evacuation helicopters conducting a training exercise near Fort Campbell, Kentucky. San Mateo was the first city in the United States to adopt a unit of the armed forces and has a long and proud history of supporting the 101 airborne, the 101st Airborne. We will soon have more information on how members of the public can assist our dear friends at Fort Campbell. But tonight, we adjourn this meeting with a solemn vow to continue supporting our adopted unit and share their grief in the wake of this tragic loss. The name, age, and home of record for each of the nine soldiers is as follows. Warrant Officer One, Jeffrey Barnes, 33, of Milton, Florida. Emily Marie Eve Bolanos, 23, of Austin, Texas. Chief Warrant Officer Two, Zachary Esperanza, 36, of Jackson, Missouri. Sergeant Isaac John, Gyo, 27, of Los Angeles, California. Staff Sergeant Joshua C. Gore, 25, of Morehead City, North Carolina. Warrant Officer One, Aaron Healy, 32, of Cape Coral, Florida. Staff Sergeant Taylor Mitchell, 30, of Mountain Rock Brook, Alabama. Chief Warrant Officer Two, Ruston Smith, 32, of Rola, Missouri. Sergeant David Salinas, Jr., 23, of Oredell, New Jersey. This is a moment of great sadness for the 101st Airborne and the city of San Mateo stands behind the families and friends of our fallen soldiers. We also adjourn in memory of nine-year-old students Evelyn Dickhouse, Haley Scruggs, and William Kinney, and school employees Cynthia Peak, Catherine Kuntz, and Michael Hill, victims of the horrific attack on Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee. I want to thank all of the first responders and heroes who intervened. With this moment of silence, we pay our respects to the lives of those six innocent people. Please join me in a moment of silence.